...tonight if you would stand and join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
We're going to begin tonight with something special. The Board of Education is pleased to recognize Parkway's latest National Board Certified Teacher. May I ask Assistant Superintendent of Teaching, Learning, and Accountability, Dr. Lisa Meredith, if you would come to the podium, please?
Good evening, President Jacob, Vice President Mogerman, members of the Board, Dr. Marty, Ms. Stover. It is with great pleasure and pride that I come here tonight to celebrate yet another talented Parkway educator that has attained National Board status. I would like to invite Ms. Darlene Wagner to join me. As you know, National Board certification is an advanced teaching credential. It complements but does not replace a state teacher's license. National Board certification is achieved upon completion of a voluntary assessment program designed to recognize effective and accomplished teachers who meet high standards based on what teachers should know and be able to do. Certification consists of four components: a written assessment of content knowledge, reflection on multiple student work samples, multiple tapings of instruction and analysis of teaching practice, and documented impact and accomplishments as a teaching professional. Throughout the process, educators are able to apply what they're learning in their classroom -- to their classroom practice and connect with other teachers pursuing this certification. Just over 110,000 teachers across the country have achieved this level of certification, and 38 have come from Parkway. As a district, we support educators throughout their journey with monthly candidate support group meetings, and we partner them with a current Parkway National Board Certified teacher. We especially would like to thank Nancy Suter, who takes a big lead on that, Liz Morrison, who has supported the practice in the past, very helpful, right? And now Amy Gurken Coats will begin taking over that role. National Board is currently revising the process, and new candidates will be able to achieve certification starting again in the spring of 2017. Our current class has over 25 teachers. They are busy collecting data, videotaping lessons, measuring impact, and adjusting their instruction. But tonight, we are here to celebrate and honor our newest member to this very elite group, Ms. Darlene Wagner. Serves as the Ran Hollow Art Teacher, and she's been doing that since 1997. Ms. Wagner is certified as both an elementary classroom generalist as well as an art educator. Since the beginning, Darlene has gone beyond her duties to serve as Arts and Education Council Coordinator, and she serves on the Professional Learning Action Team. The year -- the school year does not stop in May for Ms. Wagner. She has embraced the ever-changing world in her instruction by incorporating digital resources to teach video production and stop-motion clay animation during Parkway's summer school program and through Parkway's community school program. She works to find the inner artist in every student who walks through her door and keeps kids at the center of everything she does. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Wagner.
Do I face you?
Okay. As I was talking to some other individuals here this evening, I was saying I think the greatest accomplishment is the fact that there is such a team of people that I was able to work with. Overall, if you look at the overall picture, there were probably around 40 adults that helped in many different facets of my learning. And not only that, but students. I re-taught and had a lot of guidance and assistance from students, and that would probably be around 60 students during the coursework that I did during this time span. So it was a long journey. It's a great journey. There are struggles along the way, to be honest, but with the help and support of Parkway and teachers, administrators, and my family especially. My husband is with us tonight. Kent, and then my children, Johnny and Elise, they watched Mommy over the past three years, and they know that last year I was very close to receiving National Board certification, and I promised them that they would receive a toy. And that Mommy just wanted a pumpkin muffin or a pumpkin bagel from Panera. However, that wish didn't come true two years ago, last year. So I persevered, and I said, "You know what? I didn't get my pumpkin bagel or my muffin. You can't get your toy, but I'm gonna try it one more time." And so when I sat and looked, I think it was November the 7th, Laura Hydert, who is here to support me from Ran Hollow, she said, "You're gonna see congratulations and confetti and balloons all over that screen when you get it." So I'm sitting there waiting for those confetti and the balloons, and I was like, "I thought you said I was gonna see those." And all I saw was finally a little line that said, "Congratulations." I'm like, it was so surreal. I literally just sat there and was like, "Really?" So it's been awesome. It's been great, and I'm here to help anyone that would love to have me help guide them through the process. So thank you for my award, and thank you for supporting me.
This is an arduous process that, I guess, maybe it helps a little bit perspective to say it's a little bit like getting your CPA if you were an accountant. That separates, you know, the kind of teacher that she is, and it really puts your credentials and everything on the line as you learn this, and you become a much better teacher because of it. So we're blessed to have her and 37 others that are in this, and a big class now of 25. So that just helps every student in Parkway, and we're very proud of her. Thank you again, Darlene. 6.0 additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda. There are none. Well, excuse me, there is one. 6.01 is the addition to the agenda of Item 11.04, Approval of Personnel Items. 7.0 Citizen Statements. I have a sign-up sheet here, which I'll call your name, ask you to come to the podium, and if you can, if you would give us your name and address so we make sure we've got it correct here. And we have a number of people tonight, so we're going to give you two minutes. We apologize that we can't give you more, but we appreciate your comments that you're helping us as a board with. And each of you will receive a letter acknowledging your statement here tonight. So let us begin our citizen statements with Tanya DeWard, if I got that right?
I'm Tanya Donardi, and I live at 14760 Brookhill Drive, Chesterfield, Missouri, 63017. And I have two children in Parkway. I have an eighth grader at Parkway West Middle and a fourth grader at Claymont Elementary. And I've had the pleasure of attending a few of these meetings, and I personally, I hear a little bit of the unknown, which can be a little scary. I also remember in a meeting past, a parent saying that they feared this curriculum could over-educate our children. And what I personally fear is intolerance. This is why this sex education curriculum is so very important. Education of the LGBTQ at the middle school and high school level is important because it gives our children knowledge. With knowledge comes understanding. With understanding, that can be the key to acceptance. My personal experience was growing up with both parents working in an industry that offered me the opportunity to meet several people with diverse backgrounds and lifestyles. I was very young, and it was just simply a fact. I was able to get to know, talk to, and care about several members of what today is referred to as the LGBTQ community. This never changed how I saw myself or my sexuality, and it never changed how I felt about myself. It is very important for us all here to remember, just because you do not agree with something does not mean it does not exist. All of our children will one day be in the workforce. They will encounter many people with diverse backgrounds. They hopefully will have this education. They will have knowledge, understanding, and I hope, acceptance.
Next, we'd like to call on Rodney Hill.
I would like to thank the Board for allowing me an opportunity to speak. My name is Rodney Hill. My family and I live at 500 Mercer Manor Drive in Baldwin. I'm a parent of two boys who attend Claymont Elementary and who will attend Parkway West Middle and High Schools. I'm here tonight to state my support for the sex education curriculum that is currently under review by the school board. Many have stood before you already to advocate the full adoption of the proposed curriculum, pointing out the importance and benefits that a medically factual sex education curriculum will have. One potential impact the proposed curriculum relates to how such a curriculum may foster a safer and more understanding environment for our children. According to government websites, StopBullying.gov, LGBT youth and those perceived as LGBT are at an increased risk of being bullied. In that same article, their first recommendation is to create a safe environment for LGBT youth. The CDC quotes a study from 2009 that states, "LGBT youth are more likely than heterosexual youth to report high levels of bullying and substance abuse. Students who were questioning their sexual orientation also reported more bullying and homophobic victimization than their heterosexual peers." I believe the proposed sex education curriculum is not only consistent with our desire to educate our children, it is also consistent with our desire to maintain the safe environment that we are fortunate to have here in the Parkway School District. By including human sexuality within that curriculum, including LGBT issues and sexual identity, all students will be given the opportunity to gain a better understanding of their peers regardless of their sexual orientation or identity. Such an understanding will go far with regards to fostering our safe school environment. Such an opportunity will help the Parkway schools continue to foster their goals as stated in the Parkway School Code of Conduct. And those points are Parkway students will accept and honor all people, including those who appear different from themselves. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Next is Asher McNamara, maybe? McNamee. Okay, thank you.
My name is Asher McNamee. I live at 1214 Ridley Drive, 63011 Manchester, Missouri. I am a senior at Parkway West High School, and I'm a trans male student. And I'm here to speak about my support for the revisions being made to the health curriculum. I and 352 people, according to a petition I started back in September, agree that these revisions are for the better. As a student and part of the LGBTQ community, I feel that I was not represented in my health curriculum back in sophomore year. While my teacher was amazing, I still did not have any education about me or my identities. Along with passing my classes and struggling with my grades, as all sophomores do, I had inner turmoil involving my gender and my sexuality, and not being told about myself. Now that I'm older and I've had education, I know how outrageous it was to feel that way. As a student, I shouldn't be tossed aside, and I shouldn't be treated as though what I am is a disease. Despite popular belief, LGBTQ identities are not contagious, and I want my voice to be heard. I want future students to be heard, and no student should have to go through what I or anyone else have gone through. Even though I have an amazing support system through my staff and some of the principals at my school, it's taken a toll on my health, not being represented, and I want to make sure that no one else feels that way ever again. At a school where I see safe space stickers on the doors and hear teachers say my doors always open, I've never felt more shut out. It's not fair that a lack of representation can make a student feel so locked in. Parkway is accredited as one of the better school districts in Missouri and all that, but it's made me feel the worst, not being represented. If school can have a period about inclusion, because that's what we did today in my school, why can't my health class include me or any of my friends? Thank you.
Next on our list is Dante Hopkins.
My name is Dante Hopkins, and my address is 3954 Lincoln Avenue. All right. So aloha, ahoy, and good afternoon to all. I hope that all is well and that this message finds you well. I'm a senior at Parkway West High School, and I'd like to bring attention to the more inclusive sex ed campaign. I feel the current status of the district's sex ed curricula needs to change to meet the needs of all students in order to prepare them for the present as well as an ever-changing world. When all of the necessary foods for thought aren't brought to the table, it creates a knowledge deficiency. And Parkway is a school district that supports and strives to better the condition and purview of all students regardless of orientation, identification, and correlation. I can't tell you how many students, parents, teachers, and faculty across Parkway are a part of the LGBTQ plus community, which means lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and/or questioning and more community, if anyone here didn't know. And the education of students should properly reflect their backgrounds and lifestyles as long as it doesn't threaten or impede upon the safety or well-being of other students, and this request most assuredly does not. The change that's needed will only further the light in bright minds of bright minds in and of students who will be Parkway students. I hope my district and home will continue to support me and many other diverse and unique students in this endeavor to continue our mission in education. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Debbie Klein.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Debbie Klein, and I'm here tonight to, as a parent, to share with you my thoughts about the inclusion of the LGBTQ information in the Parkway sex ed curriculum. I have two children. My oldest graduated from West High in May and is now a freshman at Xavier University. My youngest is a sophomore at West High currently. And when I think, "What do I want for my children?", I imagine my answer to that is similar to most people. I want them to be successful, however they define that, it's up to them. But the successful, I want them to be happy, well-adjusted adults. And I feel it's my responsibility as a parent to make that happen for them, help them achieve those goals. But I also rely on the school, the school district which they attend, to give them, provide them with a full, well-rounded education. That doesn't mean just the basic subjects, although that's very important, but also how to function in society. It also includes understanding people who are different from themselves. Like a teenager, life as a teenager, when I was a teenager, for me, it was very different. Obviously, that was a long time ago, but now it is different. It has changed. When I was a student, I remember a time where just the suggestion that somebody might be gay was scandalous, and just even saying that somebody might be became a reason for them to be bullied, harassed, excluded. We've come a long way, still a long way to go, but it's not as bad now as it was for those students at that time. I have a friend who was, is gay now, was gay then, was not able to say that because at that time, much worse than it is today. Many students and others now who are LGBTQ can be open about who they are with less fear about what's going to happen to them because of the support of the schools and the community around them, because we have made those strides. And our children attend school with, and they're part of a community that includes LGBTQ students and people. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alex Voys.
My name is Alex Voels. I live in 2250 Village Green Apartments, apartment number 9, 63017. I am a sophomore and a Parkway student, and I believe that all people deserve, regardless of who they are, the right to an education, one that is all-inclusive. Today, in my common ground, it was dedicated to mentally or physically handicapped students that did not feel as if they belonged, as if they weren't included. It was heartfelt, it was moving, and it made us all think. And today, I hope that all of these students and adults that have come to speak from the heart today have the same effect on you. I'm willing to admit, I was nervous to speak today, but I stand before you as a, with the bravery that it takes for only a small fraction of, for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, or otherwise students when it comes to getting out of bed in the morning. Some not wanted in their very own household, much less being forced to go to what should be a safe haven, a place for learning and for education, just to be bombarded with hateful comments and ridicule, sideways glances, feeling left out as if to be otherworldly in a place they should call a second home. Why do kids do this, you may ask? Call others these names and treat them differently for being themselves? I believe it is because they do not understand. Parkway has set in place a system that doesn't grant them opportunities to understand, to never be able to grow up with the understanding that people are people, no matter the sex, sexual preference, race, or otherwise. I hope that when placing your vote, you will keep in mind the lives of the kids who you are so directly affecting. Please be one to make Parkway a better place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Kim Klein.
Hi, I'm Kim Klein, and my address is 13221 Cantina Drive, Chesterfield, Missouri, So I believe that Parkway has always been a leading missionary in the business of education. Recently, Terrence Roberts of Little Rock Nine came to speak at West High about his personal experiences and how as a student, we need to take the charge of our own education. Mr. Roberts told us that we need to be the CEO of our own learning. CEOs open doors and opportunities for both themselves and those around them. I'd like to share what I've taken from his message. It's time to open the door to opportunities and face this topic head-on so we can adapt our ways to ensure everyone in Parkway feels as though they are accepted for who they are as part of the Parkway family. Parkway's mission statement is to ensure that students are capable, curious, and confident learners who are well-equipped to understand and respond to the challenges of an ever-changing world. To be well-equipped to respond to the challenges of an ever-changing world, I, as a student, must have the ability to communicate with people regardless of who or what they are. I need to be able to understand where they come from, who they are, and what makes them who they are. Some people in my generation are ignorant to this idea and have no empathy to those who feel this way simply because they aren't educated about it. We try to be open-minded, yet we don't know what we need to be open-minded about. We don't have the resources available to us to be prepared for life when we graduate. I, as a student, am asking you to give us the education we need, but I'm not just asking as a student. I'm asking as a friend. I have both friends and peers who are part of the LGBTQ community, and while I try to understand how they feel and who they are, I don't have the education I need to do so. So I, as both a Parkway student and a friend, am asking for your help. We students need both yours and Parkway's help to accept, understand, and be empathetic to this idea and the people who feel this way. Please help us to understand the world to which we live.
Thank you very much. Next is Sujatha Timmons.
My name is Sujatha Timmons. I live at 602 Claymont Drive in Baldwin, Missouri. My daughter is a sophomore at South High. There's an idea out there that sex education is something that should be taught at home and should be limited in scope. I would like to say that had it not been for the health education curriculum in American public schools, my life growing up in the United States would have been a much more complicated process. The immigrant family of my childhood was a strict, religious, and culturally conservative one, a world of arranged marriages and ancient traditions. Things like school dances and proms were banned because they were considered places where immoral behavior ran wild. My parents shielded my eyes from couples holding hands or kissing in public. They banned the Brady Bunch when Marcia started dating and said, "I couldn't watch it anymore." But thank God, I went to school, and my parents had the sense not to interfere with what the schools taught. By fifth grade, there was health education, a time where I could learn important things I couldn't learn at home, like having a period is a natural process and did not mean that a girl is unclean and forbidden from entering the prayer rooms. Teachers in the public schools were my lifeline and a bridge to the bigger world I lived in and would one day be an adult in. The health curriculum of the 80s, though, is probably similar to the one Parkway uses now, and it was limited. So the information that they did not provide was filled in with Judy Blume books and unfortunately, my peers. This was not always a good or safe source for knowledge, but where do you turn when your parents don't want to teach you things? So when my best friend found her weird basement-dwelling uncle's stash of magazines under his bed, I learned things I wish I hadn't. But curiosity is a powerful force and cannot easily be quelled in young minds. We'll get the knowledge, one way or the other, but that's why I believe it's in our best interest to let trusted educators give students information. Not every child learns at home all they need to know to survive. Thank you.
And next, we have Sita Timmons.
Hi, my name is Sita Timmons, and I live at 602 Claymont Drive, Baldwin, Missouri, 63011. Okay. I'm a sophomore at Parkway South High School, and over the years, I've learned many things from my teachers. In kindergarten, I learned that talking is not appropriate during class. In second grade, I learned that fairy princesses are not an acceptable research topic, and in sixth grade, I learned that there are professions other than ballerina and veterinarian. But the most important things I've learned from my teachers have been ways to behave and react in life. Restricting health curriculum to exclude information regarding sexual orientation sends students the message that it is not an important enough topic to discuss in school. And because teachers are some of the most influential people in society with the power to shape the minds of the next generation, they need to teach their students to adopt a mentality of acceptance. Teachers need to maintain a neutral opinion and provide their students with all of the facts that they can. This gives each individual student the opportunity to decide their own opinions with the information that they were given. In addition to teaching information about sexual orientation, schools should also update the sexual education curriculum to include information about safe sex. The Center for Disease Control has stated that in 2013, 47% of high school students were sexually active, and that number is only going to increase. Teaching abstinence only is not a logical way to handle this situation. Practical information needs to be provided to students so that they're prepared. Inevitably, every student will leave school and enter the world. They will be exposed to information, whether it was taught to them previously or not. When students are taught this information by trusted professionals, they're less likely to have misconceptions and more likely to be open to their peers and colleagues and be prepared to handle any situation that is thrown at them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Eric Hints.
My name is Eric Hints. I live at 480 Sunstone Drive in Baldwin, Missouri. So I am a sophomore at Parkway West High School. In our society, we have faced many obstacles of discrimination, from racism to sexism and to our issue at hand, homophobia. In all of these instances, there is always opposition to change and growth as a society based off of closed-mindedness and intolerance. In the past, this opposition has been overcome to progress for the better as a society. The homophobia we face today is no exception. We must be willing to progress if we wish to be the best society and community we can be, from countrywide movements to state-based changes, all the way down to the education here in Parkway. To quote Martin Luther King Jr., "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." These wise words show just how important it is that we do something about this injustice and lack of representation of the LGBTQ plus community in our education system, as this one injustice harms all of the justice and righteousness in our community as well as society as a whole. In order to progress in this way, then, we must, we must educate as many people as we can about all demographics and minorities of people to be accepting and caring of each other in our society. This is why we must educate the students of Parkway on the LGBTQ plus community in order to create a more accepting and caring community for not just the majority, but all of Parkway students. Thank you.
Andrew Bennett. Andrew Bennett.
Hello, my name is Andrew Bennett. I am a freshman at Parkway Central High School. My address is 215 Ronnie Mead in Creve Court, Missouri. Recently, I have been researching into the national sex ed standards in the public school system for the United States of America. These standards are very based on the societal standard of being cisgender and heterosexual. That is what this is about, breaking that stigma. There are many kids in the LGBTQ spectrum that are students in Parkway. This curriculum could give kids the notion that they matter. The simple change could give that kid who never wants to get up in school in the morning due to fear of not being recognized in their school, the need, the feeling this could give them, this bill could make them feel that they are recognized, and that is what this is about. Education equals knowledge. Knowledge equals acceptance. Acceptance equals safer schools. Thank you.
Next is Nick Deppke.
Good evening, and thanks for allowing me the opportunity to address the board tonight. I have two, oh, sorry, my address is 125 Leah Meadows Drive. I have two children at Parkway Schools, one in elementary school and one in middle school. So I come to you this evening asking to accommodate what I feel is in all of our best interest in approving the updated sexual health curriculum framework. I feel it's important to have an updated curriculum in order to accurately reflect the reality of today's world in an age-appropriate manner. Students who are well-informed will make the most educated decisions regarding their sexual health. Also, I think that if they are aware of the LGBT and gender identity concepts, there will be the highest chance that they are accepting and inclusive of all fellow students. We feel strongly that fostering this type of environment at our school is critically important. The best place to impart this knowledge in the classroom is with educators who are properly trained to discuss these topics and to provide an open forum for discussion. If it doesn't happen in the classroom, our kids will be learning about these topics only from peers, the internet, and maybe in some cases at home. This could create an opportunity where some are either misinformed or learning things that are slanted or just not accurate. Lastly, by teaching our students what will be part of the updated curriculum will be best preparing them for the real world. These updates will help form students who will be prepared for a more seamless transition into the world of higher education and the corporate world. Most universities and corporations have embraced these changes and support their students and their employees without bias. Beginning to educate them regarding these topics will greatly benefit them as they move into the next level. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I and many other parents look forward to this becoming part of our children's education.
Thank you very much. And our final citizen statement tonight is from Michael Burts.
Michael Burts, eighteen sixty-four Oxford Court. So, good evening, Dr. Marty, President Jacob, members of the board, Nikki. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm not really sure what I can necessarily add following the powerful student speakers that we've had tonight, but I'd first just say I commend the district for the rigorous and robust and thoughtful approach that you're taking to the health education curriculum. I found it to be very fact-based and value-neutral in its approach, and I think is certainly appropriate and consistent with our mission in Parkway. But I will speak a little bit to what we've heard over the past couple of months in opposition, and much of that's tried to characterize the curriculum as an ideology and not facts. So let's separate those two things a little bit. Fact, the new curriculum as written is evidence-based, scientifically grounded, and medically accurate. It informs a whole range of topics, but specifically to the controversial sexual health portion, is firmly medically grounded. Ideology, opposition to the curriculum as far as one can tell is based on beliefs. Now, in fairness, beliefs, values, morals are all important things and exactly the kinds of things that you should be openly discussed, not jealously guarded or used to shield from facts. Because no matter what an ideology we like to believe, the fact is, LGBTQ people are members of our society and our Parkway community and our students in our schools. They are people that our students, our children, interact with every day, and as we've seen, our students are the ones asking the questions. So don't let ideology get in the way of facts. In hearing the kinds of lessons and discussions used by our teachers, even in the current curriculum, I'm encouraged by the focus on safety and understanding. I see the proposed health curriculum presenting a similar framework that is medically accurate with an eye-torture respect for others. Two good things. And I'll close with a personal anecdote. My youngest daughter's best friend is a boy whose gender identity is not aligned with his biology and has been so for all the years that we've known him. I don't see how you can tell me that an eight-year-old child has made a lifestyle choice. It is simply who he is, and that's not an ideology, that's a fact. Thank you.
We appreciate all the comments. You will receive a response from the board, and at this point, we're going to take a small break, a five-minute break, and then we'll come back to the meeting. Thank you.
And a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for December 9th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. Resolutions, there are none. Communications, 10.01, calendar of meetings. The next regular board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, January 13th, 2016 at 7:00 PM here at Central Middle with an anticipated closed session at 6:00 PM. 10.02, we want to make you aware that there's a board filing coming up. Two seats will be opened, that of Tom Applebaum and Dr. Sam Sorrentino. They will expire in April of 2016. Anyone who's interested in filing, the board candidate filing begins on Tuesday, December 15th, 2015, at 8:00 AM at Parkway's Administrative Center and continues through the district's regular business hours through January 19th, 2016. And 10.03, board liaison reports. Is there anyone that has a report they'd like to make to the rest of the board? Debbie?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I was one of several of our board members along with Dr. Marty that attended the Parkway Community Breakfast, and it was extraordinarily well-attended, and I just want to applaud the district for doing that. We'd heard from a number of different of the schools that came and did their choir performances, the Parkway West Jazz Choir Ensemble was incredible, and I felt very proud to be a part of Parkway. We had a ton of sponsors to help with this fundraising event, and heard from Tracy Hart, I believe was her name, who read the, she was our main speaker and spoke on leadership. And so she had a very well-read message to give to each and every one of us. So I was very proud of Parkway and the success of that day, and kudos to everybody that was involved in putting it together.
Thank you. Anyone else on that side over there?
I just want to say.
That go what Debbie said. We do a lot of wonderful things in Parkway and have a lot of participation, but this event was one that I wished that everyone could have been part of. It was really an outstanding one, and it was really a feeling of we are Parkway, and we cherish our district, we cherish what we do for children, we cherish what we do for one another, and we are a team. And it just was a great moment, just to be together with so many people under those circumstances. So I guess it's a situation where, you know, I feel that these are opportunities I wished everyone could be part of.
Okay. We do have, thank, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I know a lot of us attended the Parkway 2.0, kind of a meeting, and heard Ray McNulty speak, and that was great, because not only did I get a new app out of it, but I also learned about the hype curve, which was really, I literally used it the very next day in a conversation, so, but it was really interesting talking about innovation in education, and, you know, where you want to go, where you want technology and innovation to really kind of expand the boundaries of what education can do. And I think that tying it into Project Parkway and keeping it focused on the overall strategic vision is really important.
Thank you very much.
... opportunity to visit a Spark last Thursday night and watch our students participate in their pitch competition, and once again, I was extremely proud of our Spark students. I think we had presentations from maybe 10 or 11 groups, and there were four money-winners, but I have to say, all groups were fantastic. They had really learned to digest information and presented in such a way that people who had no idea anything about their business could understand. And I think they have a ways to go till they become adults and they understand everything that's involved in owning a business, but I think they're on the right road, and I'm just always so pleased to be at Spark and see so visibly, so easily, the kids learning. It's just all over the place.
Thank you. There actually were 12 presentations, and when you talk about some excited kids, they are really far, I think they're further along this year than last year, and some of them are doing rather well financially, too, considering what they're, but they've all got great ideas and programs that are putting forth, and they're just excited that it's been a great program. Dee?
This afternoon, Mr. Jacobs and I, Jacob and I, attended the facilities holiday lunch. Thank you, Mr. Mertens, for having us, and Dr. Marty was there, several administrators were there, and a whole bunch of facilities people. And I understand the lunch is paid for through their, the money from their soda machines, so taxpayers, it's not, you know, they fund it themselves. It's just a really nice get-together, and we look forward to it every year, so thanks for having us.
They collect money, too, you know, they buy raffle tickets, and some things have been donated that they, that are then given to the employees, but all of that money goes to, they've picked two families that they take care of during the holidays, so it's, again, just part of that nature that we have in Parkway of wanting to help and make things better for other people. And I did want to just give a shout-out, a thank you to Julie Pepper and the entire breakfast committee for the Parkway's First Annual Rise and Shine Leadership Breakfast. I like to call it the Breakfast Club, but, yeah, everyone was very pleased with that. The only drawback was, for some reason, parking was a little bit of a difficulty this year, but no one was complaining about our leadership breakfast, and we look forward to seeing that next year.
Mr. Jacob, can I?
Yes, please.
I'm trying to remember which board members attended, the early childhood, the new community, larger steering, a couple of you, maybe just a comment about that, because I was really a new, or four, yeah, I don't know if who wants to, I just, I know Lisa Meredith is here, but Elena Morales.
Well, I mean, I participated in the first one as well, and great group of people, very enthusiastic about the Early Childhood Center, and a lot of input, and there's a wide variety. It's not just, you know, parents, it's other businesses in the area, too, and I think that it's a great, great venue. It's going to work out, you know, the same as last year, we're going to get a lot of good information, great conversations going on, too.
The dean of education at Webster University, to business people that are part of this, and so many wonderful ideas were given that how they might continue to improve early childhood, so they're pretty excited. And they also had a wonderful boutique, I ran into some of you over there as we started our Christmas shopping, I've got my Parker, have you got yours? And you'll have to figure out what that means. Thank you very much. 10.04, board subcommittee reports. Tom talked a little bit about the Parkway Quarterly Meeting, are there any other comments anybody wants to make, or you're, I think those that were there really learned a lot from Ray, and what we're trying to, we understand change is going to be necessary to get better. Some of the upcoming subcommittee meetings, there's a Student Services Subcommittee meeting on December 15th at 3:30 at ISC, for those members of the board that go to that or assign that, and there's also a Subcommittee meeting for the HR Finance, that's on December 21st at 3:00 PM at the Administrative Center. 11.0, action items. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented on the December 9th, 2011 board materials?
So, second.
Is there anything to be pulled to action or closed? Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed or abstentions? The motion carries seven zero. I'd like to call on Brian Whittle, who's the Director of our Finance for approval, we're approving tonight's audit, our comprehensive financial report.
Hello, good evening. Brian Warts, the partner at Kirkbrack, is going to go a little more detail into the audit, but I can say we had another clean audit, no findings, it's good. They come out for about three weeks, we work together, they have full access to all of our books, they actually, we just give them a laptop with our full accounting software, and since everything's digital, they can pull up any payroll, invoice, whatever they want to check, they can look to. It's pretty intense, and I'm glad we came out, as always, with a very clean opinion. Last year's financials received the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, and we assume we're going to get it again this year, I'll apply for it, but, and the only big change you'll see in the statements is there's a new GASB, it's called GASB 68, it's retirement reporting, it added about 15 pages to the report, and we have to put in a portion of the state's retirement system debt on our statement, so that's why it's a little thicker this year, but, yeah, all right, but I'll let Brian speak about the audit itself.
Good evening, my name is Brian Warts, I'm a partner with Kirkbrack and Brackenworth, independent auditors of the school district. Brian just stole all my thunder, talking about GASB 68, that's all I had to talk about. Yeah, as he said, and we'll talk a little bit about it, but it's a big change for all school districts that are reporting on the full basis, full accrual basis of accounting, and as he said, it, I just counted it, it added, it's a 13-page footnote, so there's a lot of information in there, and it's a little duplicated, because we talk about PSRS and peers separately, and we could probably combine them a little bit, but we may think about doing that next year. So what we have issued as a part of our audit this year is the CAFR, which is the Financial Statements of the District, and then we issue as a separate report, the federal and state reporting package, so those are the two reports that we issue. As Brian stated, in the introductory section of the report, there is a Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting issued by ASBO, which we, the district has submitted every year since I've been the auditor on the district and have received that, and every year, they come back with a few comments, not very many again this year, so the district should be proud of that. It'll be interesting to see what they come back with our presentation on the new GASB, because that's new for everybody, so I'm looking forward to that. So in the financial statements themselves, there is the independent audit report, the management's discussion and analysis follows our opinion, which is prepared by management, it's unaudited, because it's non-financial information, but it describes the current financial position of the district and future plans for the district, so it's an integral part of the financial statements. Then comes the government-wide financial statements that are report, that report on the full accrual basis of accounting, so that includes the fixed assets of the district, the long-term debt of the district, and the pension liability related to PSRS and peers, and the OPEB obligation. So those are the significant things between full accrual basis and the modified accrual basis of accounting, which is what the fund financial statements are presented on, and then there's a reconciliation between those two statements. Then there's the required supplemental information, which is budget-to-action information related to the General and Teachers Fund and some pension disclosures, and then the supplementary information, which is the budget-to-action for the Capital Projects Fund. And then, when you submit a CAFR, there's certain statistical information that needs to be included in the CAFR, which is the last section of the report, which is about another 25 pages or something like that, so. So then, the other report that we issue is the federal and state reporting package, which gives an opinion on the district's compliance with budget and transportation and attendance, and then the federal compliance section, which there are two opinions, one as it relates to financial statement and reporting, compliance reporting, and our audit as it relates to A133 and major programs. One thing I do like to talk about when we are doing a presentation is sort of what our responsibility is when it comes to an audit and what your responsibility is. It's management's responsibility to prepare the financial statements and determine the basis of accounting, that it's acceptable, and to design, implement, and maintain an internal control structure of the district that protects the district's assets, and would not allow these financial statements to be materially misstated. Our responsibility is to audit those financial statements, and an audit does not relieve management or the school district of the responsibilities of the internal control, so you can't say, well, we get an audit, so our internal controls, the auditors will catch anything that's bad, and we, that would make us not independent, we couldn't do the audit if we were a part of the internal control of the district. We perform our auditing accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, governmental auditing standards and OMB circular A133. The objective of our audit is to provide reasonable but not absolute assurance that there's not a material misstatement in the financial statements, because we don't do a 100% test of transactions, there could be a misstatement that would go undetected as a result of our audit. As a part of our audit, we do review the internal control structure of the district. The most significant internal controls related to the district are, as it relates to the revenue cycle, the expenditure cycle, the payroll cycle, and the financial reporting, which is month-end financial information that they, so it used to be, if you got any month right, as auditors, we only cared that it was the last month, and now we're required to sort of look, and does the district have good financial information throughout the year as well? So in reviewing our internal controls of the district, we're required to get an understanding, we're required to test the internal controls as it relates to federal programs, but we do not give an opinion on the internal controls of the district. The type of opinions that we gave this year were all unmodified, so unmodified opinion as it relates to the financial statements, which means that based on our audit, the financial statements are presented fairly and in accordance with the basis of accounting adopted by the district, and we also gave unmodified opinion as it relates to state compliance and federal compliance. Also, as a result of our audit, there are no items of non-compliance or internal control weaknesses that are required to be disclosed to you tonight. So the, going through the audit, or the required communications a little bit, we did perform our audit in accordance with the engagement letter that was dated and signed by management on May 5th, 2015. The most significant accounting policies used by the district are, note one of the financial statements, which are the significant accounting policies. The district did adopt a new accounting policy, or two new accounting policies, which is GASB 68 and GASB 71. They're sort of intertwined, it still relates to the district picking up its proportionate share of its underfunding of PSRS and peers. I'm not sure anybody understands or expected the dollars that were associated with this, but PSRS is underfunded by about $4 billion, and PSRS is underfunded by about $364 million. So the district had to pick up its proportionate share of those two liabilities. There were no transactions entered into the district during the year, which are lacked authoritative guidance, and there were no significant transactions that appeared, that were, occurred in a different period than when they occurred. There are estimates in these financial statements, so we're required to audit management's, how the assumptions that they use to come up with the estimates, and because those results, when they come to fruition, they could be different than the estimates and be materials, so we're required to make you aware of those, and the most significant estimate in these financial statements is your actuarial liability or proportionate share related to peers and The financial, this is, we say the financial statements disclosures are neutral, consistent, and clear, clear might be a little stretch when we have a 14-page footnote, but to an accountant they are. We encounter no difficulties in performing the audit, there were no audit adjustments as a part of our audit, we had no disagreements with management. Management did issue us a representation letter dated December 3rd, which is the date the financial statements were approved to be issued, and so we take responsibility for any subsequent events that would happen between June 30th and that date, where we're not required to, or we're not responsible for any subsequent events that would happen after that date. I think the last thing I would just sort of like to hit on is, as Brian stated, they, we come in and everything's ready for us, it's on a computer, everything's electronically given to us, which is a big help to us. They did a phenomenal job being ready for us, they did a phenomenal job writing the financial statements. You know, we can't help, we can help the district, but we can't write the financial statements of the district, otherwise we could be considered independent, and with this new disclosure and everything, they did a phenomenal job, so I would just like to thank them and publicly let them know that we're appreciative of their help, so if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
The underfunding of peers and PSR, how material is that? You say $4 billion and $364 million? Obviously, we can't put a drop in the bucket to that, really, but, and that's 500 school districts involved in that.
So, just a question.
Share of it, or? Sounds like, is there any money in the fund, or?
The interesting thing about it is, they had to, in order to implement this GASB, they had to do an actuarial evaluation at June 30, 2013, and another actuarial evaluation at June 30, 2014. So, and that's the most accurate, or the most up-to-date information. And I don't remember specifically the change, but I can tell you, the district picked up about $30 million or something, just their proportion, that's how much better the fund did in one year to the next. So it's really difficult to tell, and probably the biggest driving factor is the actual return on the investments, what the investments actually do as opposed to what they're considering them to do, and longevity of people, how long are they going to live, that sort of thing. And then you can always finagle a little bit with discount rates and that sort of thing, but I don't know that anybody realized that it was going to be to the magnitude that it was, to be honest with you.
Well, you're beating on my home state a little bit, but, correct, I would agree with you. Well, we appreciate really very much, over the years, as you've come out here, and now, I know your company's quite familiar with Parkway, so that helps a lot, that you, you know, that you already know kind of what to expect and where to look.
Right, right, it does help both sides, honestly, so, it helps us know to where to get the information and then helps them to know us. We've had, you know, our goal is always have the same people on the engagement, it makes it easier for everybody, and we've done a really good job of that since we've been the auditors of keeping the same upper-level people on this engagement, so.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And if I may have a motion and a second, that the Board of Education approve the 2014-2015 audit report as presented in the December 9th, 2015 board materials.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed or abstentions? Being none, the motion carries seven zero. 12.02 is the approval of Parkway's 2016 legislative platform. Are there any questions for Annie Dickerson, or are we ready to? Okay.
I mean, she stays here all night, they're better.
I have a comment for Annie.
We give her a hard time, she's got to ask her.
I love being here. I love being here.
I've been a part of reviewing and writing these for many, many years, and I have to tell you, I love how you started this, that your first sentence is educators, it's time to do more. It's so positive and uplifting, I think, and I think if I were a legislator and I saw that first sentence, I would want to dig in and read the whole thing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was the idea. No, I will say, the addition of the summary at the beginning of the platform was new this year, and as we looked at the priority positions, we felt like there were some themes in terms of allowing us to do some work that's happening locally and regionally and across the state that we are part of and that we have people that are part of, and so we wanted to let them know that we feel like it's important work and it's happening, and if they can give us some time to do some of that work, that would be wonderful, so. We wanted them to realize that we want to be part of the solution and portray it in a positive manner, but we also want them to be aware that we feel like we need some time to do some things.
I agree with Beth, I think it's well-traveled, it's positive, and it doesn't come across as if we're scolding our legislators, or, you know, like you said, it's teamwork, so I like the way that it's worded.
Go ahead.
I really liked the feedback, because. Annie and I did talk quite a bit about this, and we really felt that, you know, we had seen some others that were somewhat, you know, kind of pointed a negative, and we really felt that, you know, if we really are serious about working with our legislators, we're not, it's not about us scolding them, they got a big job, and I think we have to be respectful of the fact that they have a lot of publics, a lot of entities, and we really want to be helpful. We do really want them to have to understand that I think we're at a time where we could use a little time out, we don't need more legislation, we can just do some of the work that's been given us, but, you know, we need to understand, you know, some of the pressures that are on them as well, but Annie did a great job, I really appreciate the attention you gave to the way that was presented.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
A motion and a second, then, that the Board of Education approve the 2016 legislative platform as presented in the December 9th, 2015 board materials.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries seven zero. There is no policy review tonight, 14.0, a report, and we're looking forward to Michael Seppi, who will report to us on our Parkway-Rockwood Community Education update, we really do appreciate it. Mike, it's been a, just a wonderful success, as I go and see the schools and what they're doing, I'm really enthused about this, I'm looking forward to your report.
Great, thank you, good evening. Thank you all for having me here tonight. I made a note here, as I was walking up, that it was December of 2011 when we had the first conversations, very informal, about, you know, I wonder if, and here we are in December 2015, I'm here tonight to tell you about not only how the first year of the partnership went, which is fantastic, but also talk about kind of where we're headed, where this year is headed, where we're headed looking forward. So I'll kind of jump right into it, before I do that, I just wanted to call attention real quick to the logo that is on the front page there of the PowerPoint. We used to put engage and rich and joy underneath our logo, but we spent a lot of time talking about. about what our purpose is here over the last year, and we think this better summarizes what community ed's all about. It's where learning and fun meets. So I hope you hear that theme as we go through tonight's presentation. I do just want to let you know that I did give a very similar presentation to the Rockwood Board just a few weeks ago. So I hope to do three things for you tonight. One is give you a quick overview of the year that was FY15. Talk a little bit about the program review and that we had completed on the community ed program this past summer, and then look ahead FY16 and beyond. I will start by saying none of this could have been possible without many of the folks here in Parkway who've given a lot of their time and effort over the last year and a half, and several of those folks, including Dr. Marty and Paul, are in this room tonight. So certainly, on behalf of community ed, we certainly appreciate your ongoing support and everything that we're doing. As we look back at FY15, as I was putting this presentation together, I pulled out the presentation we gave to the board in June of 14, just before the partnership kicked off. And I won't read through this, but it's interesting. We kind of had three, three things we thought would happen with the partnership. One is we'd enhance the overall experience for patrons. The second is we'd be fiscally responsible, and the third is we could become a national model. Many of those, those things are either have already happened or are happening, and we're looking forward to doing that continuously going forward. And I think you'll hear some of that tonight. So FY15, what a year. As I mentioned, it's hard to believe we're already here, but here we are. So as we look back and at FY15 and kind of some of the highlights that happened, one of the biggest here in Parkway is the implementation of the Adventure Club program, which as you might recall was in nine of the schools, and I'll talk about the other nine in just a few minutes. Additionally, we have the e-hour structure in Parkway. Parkway has always had an after-school, before and after-school enrichment program. The structure just changed a little bit with the intent. The intent behind that was just to provide additional variety for students to participate in programs. Expansion of the basketball league from not only just Rockwood locations into Parkway locations, and I'll talk about that in just a minute as well in terms of numbers. And then in terms of, in Rockwood, what's happened is Parkway had a great, has had a great adult enrichment program for many, many years, and so we were able to bring some of those opportunities to Rockwood residents. So as we look at FY15, we had just over 42,000 registrations in community ed. And I want to take a minute and explain what registration means, because you may recall we have seven different programs under the umbrella of community ed, and all of them count their registrations just a little bit differently based on the nature of the program. So for example, in our e-hour program, you know, there's four sessions a year. One child might participate in four sessions, but because that's a seat sold, we count that as four registrations. So I want to be clear that 42,000 plus does not mean necessarily 42,000 unique individuals. But as we kind of delve into those numbers a little bit, I pulled out a few numbers I thought might be of interest, interest to you all. And for FY15, there were 712 total Parkway Adventure Club registrations. That's throughout the school year, and that would have been last summer as well. But I kind of dove into that a little bit before I came here tonight, and I want to just kind of, when we look at just school year, we went ahead and looked at through start of school till December 9th last year, there were 530 Parkway Adventure Club registrations. This year, from the start of school till December 9th, there were 598. So we're looking at just about a 13% increase in the Adventure Club registrations for this year versus last year at the same time. Additionally, you'll recall last in FY15, we started offering the basketball league in Parkway locations. We had 212 Parkway participants in the basketball league last year. This year, the league just kicked off with games starting last weekend, we have 272, which is about a 28% increase. And so what that tells us is that awareness of the programs are being raised, but also we believe that we're offering high-quality programs. And so it's easy, it's easy to attract folks when we believe we're offering high-quality opportunities. I kind of pulled together just a hybrid of pictures, and I don't know if you can see all of that or not, but I know this is on board docs, so you may have had an opportunity to look at it. But what community ed is about, I mentioned at the beginning, it's where learning and fun meet. It's about helping kids find their spark. What are they passionate about? Whether that's walking through, through the North Shore up in Minnesota on our Great Lakes of Voyage to e-hour classes where they can learn to balance magic tricks of plates on a stick to learning to play chess beyond. Community ed is really an opportunity for youth to kind of explore, and that's what it's about. But what's so great about community ed, it's not just for the kids, it's about adults too. And we talk a lot about community ed being that place where a school district can connect with all segments of the, of the resident population. So whether it's a six, the mother with the six-month-old who she wants to expose to swim lessons for the first time, on up to the 65-year-old who wants to learn how to line dance in Parkway Central Middle here on Thursday nights. It really is an opportunity for all residents to kind of engage and make a connection to the school district and kind of find their spark. And again, it's where learning and fun meet. So as we look at FY15, just a brief overview of kind of how the financials work, you might recall that Rockwood School District serves as a fiscal agent, and what that means is that all revenue and most employees are hired through Rockwood. There's a couple of exceptions to the employees, but for the most part, everything flows through Rockwood as a fiscal agent. Revenues and expenses are, can either be shared or specific, and what that means, a quick example would be my salary is shared between the two districts. An example of specific expenses would be Adventure Club site staff. So the site staff at Soreno Springs would be charged to Parkway versus the site staff at Blevins Elementary would be charged to Rockwood. The financials that I'm going to quickly walk through tonight, the summary includes results from the following programs. So I won't read through all that. I'll just call attention to that you'll recall through, through the community ed budget that I'm responsible for overseeing. It's the adult and literacy program in Rockwood only and the aquatics program in Rockwood only. So here's what it looked like. Here's what FY15 results looked like. We had revenue of just over $8 million, total program expenses of just about $7 and $3/4 million. And so the net surplus was $285,338. And you'll recall that we break that down then by district, and again, that goes looking at participation levels. So for example, if 75% of the basketball participants were from Parkway, 75% of the revenue and expenses flowed to Parkway. So when you kind of go through all those programs that were on the previous screen, this is how the numbers, numbers play out. So Parkway, after all expenses, netted just over $90,000 last year through the community ed program. I did want to take a minute at the bottom of this slide, you'll notice there were a couple of things. You'll recall there were some startup costs for Parkway that were incurred in FY14 in order to be ready for the partnership to begin in 15. So that was generally associated with startup costs for the first nine Adventure Club sites, things like staff that we had to start before supervisors to get them trained, equipment, supplies for the sites, so on and so forth. So that startup cost was about $135,000, and we can expect a similar amount this year as we're preparing for the next nine sites next year. I did also want to just mention that as we move forward and as you see that there hopefully will be years when there is a net surplus in the community ed budget, that provides opportunities for the potential for future facility maintenance expenses that can be funded by a community ed. So in Rockwood, I can give you some examples of how that works. And so community ed has, just this past year, we helped with the replacement of elementary and middle school gym floors. Because why? We use those spaces quite a bit, just as much as the schools use them. So we understand that as community ed grows and as there is general wear and tear based on the programs that are run, we have a responsibility when our finances allow to help reinvest in, with those facility maintenance expenses. Field renovation is another one. With all the programs that we have, that's an ideal opportunity to look at. I can give you an example, at one of the Rockwood High Schools where we run our basketball league, they needed a new scoreboard, so we paid 50% of the scoreboard. Those are the right things to do. And so when we have those opportunities, it only makes sense that we assist with those expenses. So we would hope that as we move forward and as a community ed program continues to grow in Parkway, there would be some opportunities to do that. So that was kind of the year in review. I did want to take a minute and talk about the Learning Resources Network program review. You might recall there, we are a member of the Learning Resources Network, which is a consortium of lifelong learning organizations around North America. They have about 1,200 members who represent lifelong learning in all fields, whether it's public schools, parks and rec, higher ed, just various, various fields. And they have an employee who spends about 50 weeks of his year traveling to lifelong learning organizations and doing reviews. He's been doing this for about 20 years. So what he does is he comes on site, he looks at every aspect of what we do from programming to structure to finances to everything, and then he compares us to what he's seen as best practices. So I'm very, very pleased to be here tonight to tell you that after they did our review and Dr. Marty was able to visit with the program reviewer who was on site, Parkway-Rockwood community ed is not only in the top 10% of community ed programs in North America, Parkway-Rockwood community ed is the best community ed program that they have ever reviewed on site. So we're very pleased to be able to stand here and say that, because again, it goes back to we're doing great things for the residents of the district. And so one of the things they do is look at your strengths. And so I kind of very high-level summarize these, and I won't go through them all, but things like, obviously, I must say, he started by saying the partnership is a very big strength of community ed. He talks about programs and staff, but I did want to take just a minute, a minute to talk about that last bullet point, the development of the leadership team and implementation of the traction model. That's something that Learn recommended to us over a year ago, and what it, what it really is, it's a business model that can be very much applied to the lifelong learning program that we have, being a self-funded department. And so what it does is it allows us to focus on the important aspects of the business and really take us from good to great. So while we're really, really good right now, we want to be even better. We're not, we don't want to settle for what we have. I will also tell you that as part of this, we've started a leadership team meeting where we meet weekly, and we sort of, we work on the business, not in the business. So we're talking about bigger picture items, about looking ahead, what's coming up, how can we do even better? Okay. Did I skip one? I'm sorry. Let me go back. Okay. So as we look ahead to FY16, and I know we're halfway through FY16 and beyond, a couple of things I just wanted to call your attention to. We will continue to identify opportunities to enhance and expand programs for this year in the terms of expansion of existing sports programs in Parkway locations. The girls volleyball league was this fall, and that took place. And then this spring, we'll be doing a boys flag football league. That'll, that'll happen in the spring. Implementation of the nine remaining Adventure Club sites, so you know that's coming next year. What I would say to you to that is registration will start in March. So just as an FYI, we just got these delivered this week. This full-color brochure will be going home with families at all the nine schools that will be getting Adventure Club starting next year, and it's really just their first introduction to kind of details and more information and telling them who they can contact us to learn as much as they want to learn about what's happening. And we will continue, oh, I have, and on the Rockwood end of things, we will continue to expand upon the great adult programming that's been in place for Parkway from, in Parkway for many years. In terms of staffing, I wanted to take just a minute about that. I mentioned about startup costs, so we will be doing that again this year. There are some positions that we're hiring in this fiscal year, so we're ready when the sites start up next year. You might recall when the partnership was being discussed, we knew that as we grew, there would be some additional positions we would need to sustain the program. And one of those is we've gotten to the point where we're bringing onboard a human resources assistant to assist with the hiring, because as you, as you may remember, our biggest challenge is hiring of the Adventure Club site staff, because it's such a large program, and the turnover, based on the nature of that industry, is one that requires us to constantly hire. Finally, so that we can better, better communicate the programs to the patrons of both districts, we are re-tweak, restructuring the way we handle our marketing. And so we are, previously had a person who was sort of designated to leading our graphic design efforts. We've changed that up. We're actually going to bring on a professional marketing supervisor who can now lead our content development and management. We've gotten to the point from a size and from a volume standpoint, we need that special expertise. So that'll be coming onboard for FY17. So as I wrap up, I would just tell you, as we look ahead to not only the rest of this year and beyond, I'm very excited to say that we're going to be transitioning the Adventure Club online registration to the same system that we use for the course registration in community ed. If you haven't had a chance to check out how registration happens online, it's fantastic. And so parents now in Adventure Club will be able to own their account. They'll be able to log in anytime, see what their balances are, submit change forms. The current system doesn't provide that interactive piece, so we're really excited that parents are going to be able to have ownership of what's happening with their account. We've been working on the advisory committee for, talking about for quite a while. We're looking at having the first meeting of that be later this spring. And then finally, I just wanted to throw out there that we are keeping an eye on potential Affordable Care Act and Fair Labor Standard Act implications. With the Affordable Care Act, we've had to provide some, some benefits for some folks who previously didn't have it, which is an additional cost. And then also, there's some discussion at the federal level regarding some changes of Fair Labor Standard Act, so we're keeping an eye on that. So that is my report. I apologize it took a little bit longer than I was hoping it would, but if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
I can tell you, I got my community ed catalog today.
Just this week, yeah.
So I'm in there looking to see if there's something that I can do other than line dancing.
Oh, come on, Chris.
I always end up with a partner that's taller than me. Anyway, are there any other, any questions that you?
First of all, I, my children attend some of the e-hour programs that are offered, and so, and I have to say that I think that they're very well-suited, age-appropriate, and fantastic for the students. My question with that is though, how do you decide what programs at what schools at what times?
That's a great question. So the way that that works is currently the e-hour program consists mostly of what we call collaborative partners. So these are organizations like a med-science or a science center or, who come in and provide programming. So before I get into how it's currently handled, I will tell you one of the things we're working on, and we're very excited, we're starting to see more interest from the building level of teachers who want to create and design and teach e-hour classes, which we think's fantastic. So, but the way that it works now is so we will over, kind of, starting in May, we will talk with all the various collaborative partners that we have, and they sort of give us their availability in terms of geographic locations they can provide service, how many days a week they can provide service, whether it's morning, whether it's afternoon. So it's a giant matrix where we lay everything out. We work with the schools, they identify the days and times that they want e-hour to run in their building. We try to match all that together, and then we send the proposed list out to each principal for sign-off. So there are times where a principal will say, you know what, chess went great, we wanted every session. Great, we'll have it every session. Then the second piece of that is we also look back at previous years. So we try not to repeat unless the school's specifically asking year over year to repeat a class. So because we have enough variety, we can move it around so that it's not the same offerings every year unless the school's specifically asking. But any time throughout the year, while we do lay out the entire year over the summer, oftentimes a school will come to us or parents will reach out to us and say, for example, I think at Henry right now, we're working with parents on a robotics, doing a robotics after-school class. So any time throughout the year, we can add classes, but that's kind of how we start it. It's just a very involved matrix of availability and what's been happening.
And my second question, just to clarify a statement that you made about adding the HR assistant to help with hiring, because, does this mean with, especially with the Adventure Club, does this mean that there's high turnover rates with Adventure Club? Are you, do you see a high turnover rate with?
Well, it's a, it's a both and. So there is turnover, the nature of the position, because most of the positions that we're hiring aren't the full-time position at each site. It's what we call the activity assistance positions that typically pay about $9 an hour. Typically, these are college or maybe just out-of-college kids. For example, I can tell you right now, we're going through a transition end of first semester, so the college kids that have been working with us all semester, some of them won't be able to return for the spring because their college schedule won't permit it. So we'll have a mini hiring spree here as we head now, getting ready for the spring semester. But, but yes, generally, in the childcare industry, everyone struggles with finding the volume of staff. It's all, that's one of the biggest challenges of providing the service.
Okay.
So imagine it's 2011 and we have a new superintendent who is very enthusiastic about creating, about exploring the potential of this partnership with Rockwood and Parkway, and you have board members who are possessive of their program and thinking, what? But huh? We were, we were. But Mr. Tandy spent untold hours working on it, and we worked through all the details, and I'm just really impressed. It seems to almost have gone seamlessly, and I think the public is much better served, and congratulations, Dr. Marty and Mike and Paul for all your hard work. Thank you.
Can I just piggyback on that for a minute? Before our board meeting tonight, I got a phone call from Matt Dole, the president of the Rockwood Board, telling me that he and Dr. Knos wanted to come to our meeting tonight, but unfortunately, they were both unavailable to thank us. tonight, but unfortunately, they were both unavailable, to thank us for pursuing the partnership and to thank us for our perseverance, I think, because it, you know, it wasn't an easy thing to do. And he was saying that we're great partners. I will say that I think we all agree that Rockwood is a great partner to us. And he reiterated what you said your goal was, and that was to become a national model. He definitely thinks that this, this model could sell in some other districts across the country. So, just a compliment from your boss.
Great, thank you.
So to, to be, one of your bosses to be repeated publicly.
And so, speaking of that boss, I will tell you, Dr. Marty encouraged us in this spring, in April, we're going to be heading up to Minnesota, which is, that is where community ed was founded. So it's very common to have programs like this in that area. And so, we're going to be doing some site visits of some high-achieving programs come April, and kind of see what we can learn from them and maybe what we can, can share.
I heard from Dr. Knos too, by the way, and they indeed wanted to come here tonight, and Dr. Knos said the same thing, echoed that. And having a chance to hear the audit that Mike talked about, Dr. Knos and I were both in the room. I think one of the things that we, you know, since we're passing around compliments here, you know, it takes a special kind of organization and leaders. And I have to say that honestly, when we were exploring community ed, Paul and a couple of people, I know Desi and a couple of people went over to Rockwood, and they came back with this idea that maybe we could look at this partnership. I wasn't necessarily there either in the beginning, that thought, wait, but we can do this ourselves. But Mike and his organization have made this go much further. For us to have started and build what Rockwood has and now share with us would have taken years. And so, the transition has been really fine. And Mike's staff has been so willing to transition, not holding anything back, but working with our staff, and now mainly kind of transition to Mike Roth as kind of your contact, it's really gone well. And so, I have to compliment Mike, since we're throwing compliments on him, for really setting up a wonderful environment of cooperation and partnership. Because these things will have, you know, some bumps and roll, but Mike just works through those so seamlessly and is always, always willing to listen. And I sometimes call him with a little thing, and it seems like it takes care of itself pretty quickly, so.
Well, thank you. And I should say, we've received great support from the building level administration throughout the district. So it's been, it's just been a pleasure, and we're looking forward to the next several years.
I had a couple of questions, actually, after that, because that was Matt Dole speaking at me so much. So you said that we made $285,000 in net revenue, $192,000, I think, in '93. Do you know what the plans were? Like, are we on plan? Are we?
Yeah, I would say that we're ahead of what we anticipated.
Okay, great. And the other question I have is, have we surveyed our Adventure Club participants in Parkway and the nine schools? And if not, do we plan to?
Great question. We survey parents at the end of every year. So I can provide you that feedback.
I don't need, I don't need it personally.
I do.
I just want to know that you're getting it and that you guys are paying attention.
We want to make sure that they're, they're finding a quality program that they find not only safe, but, but helpful and effective for their families.
Well, I think your 13% increase in registrations is a, is a telling number.
I can tell you, the nine principals are really excited to, you know, to get going, the last nine. They're really, they're right, aren't you finding?
Yeah.
They're really ready to get going.
It's going to be a fun, but busy, but fun spring. We're looking forward to it.
I think your use of technology is very helpful, too. It's nice to, maybe not on a cutting edge, but at least to be, you know, where you have to fill it out on paper and mail it in or go someplace, and that's, I think, counterproductive to what we're trying to do, to make it fun and, and a good learning process.
It's always amazing to me when we look at registrations and we'll see a 4:00 AM registration, and what that says to me is that's convenient for the person who needs to register, and that's what we're about. So, we're happy to do that.
I noticed one of the goals in there, that opportunities that was talked about was reducing costs, is that?
Yeah, so what that is, what, what he referred to about that, and it's kind of jargony, so if I can, if it's, just tell me if I need to explain some more. But he talks about looking at our production costs. So what are our costs to deliver a program? So an example of that might be when we use ER outdoor, bringing in collaborative partners, that typically is, there's a percent split in terms of how the revenue costs, and are we at the right point in that split? Can we look at maybe massaging that, that break a little bit? So it's really just, he's talking about looking at your programs, he's not talking about laying off staff. He's saying, can we individually run a program more efficiently as we're, as we're preparing it? So those are all the things that we're looking at. And I should mention, I didn't get to the right-hand side of that, that slide that I talked about the strengths, but it said opportunities on the right. Greg, at the Learn, the Learn program, he said he's used to going into places and giving them a list of challenges, that if they don't meet in the next few months, they're going to have problems. He said, you don't have challenges, you have opportunities. And that's a great way to present it, because that, certainly, we can do some things better. We're always trying to do that. But, but we're doing really good work, and we're just trying to get a little bit better every day.
Well, let us know what we can do, because we're, we're pleased with the progress.
Well, your support is, is much, much appreciated.
I think the board president needs to sign up for line dancing.
It is, it is partner line dancing. I will go with you. We will.
It's not me, it's him.
Oh, Chris, I'm sorry. Yeah, Chris. Well, then, I will find someone in our office to go with you.
I think Dean would be good.
I'm thinking stand-up comedy.
It's very popular, by the way, that class, very popular.
You know, just, what do you think, that you? I think Greg told us that really honestly, one of, one of the discouraging things that's happened around the country is a lot of community education programs are going away for, obviously, funding, but just the inability really to sustain some of the things that, and so, you know, a lot of communities that started and just don't have the ongoing resources, and they have to make tough decisions, and community ed is probably an easy, easy target. So the, the building of a strong program like we have, the partnership, is really key. And one of my encouragements about going to, which we did up in Wisconsin to build our program, when you go to Minne- Minnesota, Minnesota does have state support, so it's a little bit unique. But they also have built this wonderful community umbrella, and I think you're going to see that, that's why I'm hoping Mike and the people will see, where they really, you know, they just taken, they have taken down some barriers. It's not uncommon, when we were up there and doing a visit, to see in a, in a room, all face sitting in a room. So it wasn't about, you know, we don't, you know, we're not concerned, we bring in, very inclusive, all groups. We think about our community as a whole and quality of life, and we don't worry about who's in the room, and government officials, and mayors, and chambers, and businesses. So they really think about a really inclusive program. And one thing we continually heard is, they haven't lost bond elections because the community is so supportive, they get in those buildings. And so, it's not about K-12 education, it's about community, and, and, you know, whether it's the line dancing, or the swimming, or early childcare. So I think it's, it's, when we think about our future and the fact that so many of our residents own their children in school, it is so important that people do get in our schools.
It's not uncommon for us to hear comments from some of our older patrons taking class when they come in saying, I haven't been in the building in years.
Yeah.
It looks great. And I'll just wrap up with, I did have a chance last week to attend the Learn Annual Conference, where they bring together all of their members for the year, and to your point about becoming a national model, I think it was Ms. Feldman, you who said that. I was in, Greg Marcell, the gentleman who did our, our program review, he was doing a session on operations, best practices, and structures. And prior to the conference, he asked me to stand up and talk about what we're doing in, in Parkway and Rockwood. So I'm hopeful that we can not only continue to do better here, but, but share what we're doing well with others, so they can maybe have the same opportunities in their communities.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Well, we have another work session here, report. It's on Goal Three, Confident Learners. Chelsea Watson, our Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, if you could come up and help us.
There I am. Good evening, President Jacob, Vice President Mogerman, members of the board, Dr. Marty, Mrs. Stover. Once again, it gives me great pleasure to stand here before you to give you an update on the, oh, work, I forgot this, around.
Do you want me to, do you want me to draw a picture of a scientist?
No. No, I don't have any balls or toys for us today either, so. Somebody did ask me if I was going to bring toys today, but no toys. The work of Goal Three centers around the last C of our mission, but of course, it's not last. Don't let that fool you, because the work is very, very important. The action steps and strategies aligned with Goal Three aim to ensure that all of our students are confident learners who are increasingly self-directed and persistent as learners. And as you know, our road to accomplishing Goal Three is through the work of character education. And we have agreed that we must be intentional in this work. Character education includes the expansive range of concepts, such as positive school climate, social-emotional learner, restorative practices, positive youth development, and service learning. These approaches, these approaches promote the social, emotional, physical, and academic, and ethical, ethical developments of our students. Character education helps our kids be responsible, contributing members of our society. Our collective work in accomplishing the work around Goal Three lies in our character education commitments. Our common language and our commitments is what we promise to our community, to our students, to the staff, and to each other. This work helps our students to develop important human qualities such as justice, diligence, respect, courage, and most importantly, why do we live by these qualities? Our commitments align with our mission, our vision, and our learning principles. And through the work, we know that we have an obligation. We have an obligation to teach our students to be good people and good citizens, because what we know, it's not formed automatically. It's formed by good teaching, role modeling, and practice. So tonight, we are going to narrow our focus a bit to Commitment Five of our character education commitments. The work around Commitment Five helps us understand that we must be doing the right thing when nobody is even looking. Schools who are helping our students develop their character, work with students to help them understand rules, their awareness of how their behavior affects others, and character strengths, such as self-control, perspective-taking, conflict, and resolution skills. Rather than settle for mere compliance, schools must help students seek to benefit from their mistakes by providing meaningful opportunities such as problem-solving, reflection, and restitution. Consequences should be relevant, logically related to the offense. They must be respectful, not embarrassing, not demeaning. They should be reasonable, not harsh or excessive. And they should be restorative, restoring or repairing the relationship by making some kind of restitution. And also, consequences should be resource-building, helping our students to develop our char- their character qualities, such as empathy, and helping our students understand that they should be motivated to do the right thing. Staff of schools working toward Commitment Five routinely deal with behavior issues in positive ways that encourage reflection, according to the school's core values. They offer the opportunity for students to repair the harm done, taking in effect their moral growth, and making sure that the child is respected as an individual. So at this time, I am going to turn it over to Michael Barilak, who has been doing a wonderful job of leading the work around restorative practices with staff. Michael?
Don't take that. I didn't mention your name before, but I certainly wasn't trying to ignore you, because everybody on the board respects and admires you and loves working with you, although we're looking forward to maybe restorative justice being a substitute for some of the other activities we do together.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I, you know, you'll hear me talk a lot tonight about restorative practices. We're trying to change that language from justice and discipline to be more of a foundation. So you might hear that as I talk a little bit more. Recently, I attended the National Conference of Restorative Practices where I came across this definition. What struck me most about this definition of restorative practices was that it didn't necessarily focus on a restorative response to student misconduct, but rather the importance of building a stronger sense of community in our schools and classrooms. I've pulled some of the key themes from this definition to indicate the importance of developing a strong restorative culture in our schools and the impact this will have on school climate. Most importantly, it's vital to consider restorative practices as proactive, as a means of building a stronger school community, rather than only a response to student behavior. Strengthening relationships will undoubtedly help adults and students handle the good and challenging decisions made at school. Students need to feel that regardless of the choices they make, they are part of their school community. Although consequences may be necessary when bad decisions are made, a restorative response will help students and adults and students work toward a stronger sense of belonging when students return to school. A strong restorative culture also allows students to feel that they are part of the process of creating a more positive school climate. Restorative practices give students a voice, allowing them to engage and be part of conversations that have impact on their daily life at school. Whether it's setting up class norms at the beginning of a school year, or helping students process when harm happens in the classroom, restorative practices give students opportunity to participate in the process of healing. All of this is wrapped up in developing more meaningful lessons, as we hope students understand how their behavior impacts their schools and those around them. Helping students understand who was impacted by their behavior and how they can fix it are some of the key themes of restorative response, which make this approach more meaningful. All of this work needs to begin with the adults in our schools. This work will not be successful if the adults who work with students every day don't understand how interconnected we are, and how much impact we have on whether or not students feel part of the school culture. As we continue to learn and grow in the area of restorative practices, we have consulted with Derek Wall. Derek is a St. Louis therapist and restorative trainer who happens to be a Parkway parent. Over the past two years, we have relied on his expertise. Many of our Parkway administrators and teachers have learned a restorative foundation from Derek's presentations in our schools and in the community. Here are Derek's thoughts about Parkway and restorative practices.
I think one of the really cool things about Parkway is that it's a very, you know, they've been progressing this week. And there's a lot of initiatives and things that Parkway does extremely well. Their character education piece now teaches them about character. And a lot of the, the business programs on the Spark program, how kids develop their social security. And that there's a lot of amazing things that Parkway does well to help develop kids. Not unlike some other districts, there are some areas that Parkway may still have some challenges. And one of the challenges is how is it that we respond to students' behavior? How is it that we create a culture that helps kids feel connected, particularly when we have such a diverse population of students? And so, you know, our traditional model, or the old model of how it is that we develop student disciplines, a hundred and zero tolerance framework, where student violence is a rule and we have a consequence for them. And what we're finding is, is that those strategies aren't effective, at least not for certain groups of students, but personally, it's in general. And so, taking a look at how it is that we handle student behavior is important, because as all of us know, you know, learning doesn't happen in a vacuum. It doesn't happen in the absence of relationship. And so, if we don't have strong, healthy relationships between teachers, staff, students, parents, administrators, then it's less likely that our students will get the information and develop the skills necessary in order for them to be successful people. So, you know, a restorative approach or a restorative foundation creates the opportunity for relationships to be built, maintained, and restored when they've been broken by misbehavior. So I think that as far as Parkway goes, they have to really make opportunity to influence how it is, this influence student outcomes in a really positive and helpful way.
It's fairly evident to see where the concepts of restorative practices exist within that foundation of Parkway's mission and vision. Building strong, healthy relationships is essential, and key to that is effective problem-solving. We want our students to speak their own voices while listening to understand others. And as you'll hear from a middle school student who is still here tonight, we have a video clip of him, and a teacher, restorative practices help students work together to understand the impact they have on each other. Although restorative practices specifically enhance our work around Commitment Five, it's important to see that it's not important to see that it's not limited to just that commitment. Our character education commitments guide our work around helping students with not only knowing what is the right thing to do, but doing the right thing. There are components of restorative practices which most definitely apply to school settings, but the skills students will learn are clearly geared to transfer to real-world settings as students learn to navigate personal and professional relationships. As you know, when we educate the whole child, nothing is done in isolation. We developed our character competencies a few years ago. John Barrow and Charlotte EJ led this work through the Character Education Action Team. These competencies are already living in some of our curricular units and are now part of the elementary progress reports. The restorative approach clearly supports our work with the competencies as we teach our students to be good citizens who have the skills to build and maintain positive relationships in and out of school. Many of our schools have started their work on developing restorative practices in their own communities, and we want to share with you how far some of our schools have come. Southwest Middle has led the way in restorative practices, and we want you to hear from them about how this work impacts their community. So we're going to hear from the principal, Craig Maxwell, we'll hear from Rhett, and then we'll hear from a teacher.
Restorative practices, and we started to work into those. We saw that it was a shift as far as what discipline looks like, really kind of going back to a lot of what our core values are here at Southwest and also aligning it with the Parkway mission. And just looking at ways that we can kind of have discipline in the learning process so that we can, you know, students the skill that they need to kind of solve problems when they're having issues.
We're using proactive circles, going through our advisory programs. So students are coming to advisory on Monday morning to that community building activities, but mainly to kind of build a research community advisory. And then we're also using both restorative conferences as well as restorative circles. So restorative conferences are happening when there's an issue between either two students or multiple students or students and staff. Maybe you're having those students and staff get together and go through the restorative practices questions, and that's helping to kind of repair the harm that's been done. And we're also using restorative circles in classrooms so that we can kind of help repair something with the kind of classroom issue that happened in that classroom.
I would say it's just making that shift. So it's kind of taking what we are, what we've always been doing with discipline and really aligning that with our mission and really kind of aligning it with those guiding principles that we have and our core values. And so it's taking that idea of preparing our students to be ready for ever-changing world and thinking about how we can take discipline issues that come on and have that be part of their learning process. So it's a shift from just thinking of discipline as far as punishment to thinking of it as a learning opportunity and a standardizing.
It's pretty much everyone's just relying on what they have to say, and everyone just processes it and tries to get it to a certain point where, like, no one can agree. So it's like, if I were to hear someone, everyone has to say, oh, he did this, he did this, I have to say, yeah, that's correct, and I'm sorry. And that's pretty much how it goes down, so.
As I started to learn about restorative practices, it was, in cycle maybe, in the way I was thinking about, changed the way I was thinking about how I dealt with students who were experiencing issues in class. I think that sometimes in schools, we tend to expect us to just conform, and looking at it through a more restorative way, it allowed me to get to a more holistic approach to kids are kids and they're going to make mistakes, but what do we do as humans when we make mistakes? We have to figure out how to make up for them. We have to figure out who was hurt in the situation. And it allowed for more of a dialogue rather than me administering a consequence. It doesn't mean that there weren't consequences to actions, but having to see kids take ownership and explain why the incident happened that was happening made a big difference in just the relationships that I perform with my students. I think that having a restorative approach allows students to really take ownership of their behavior, which is sometimes it gets harder than just showing a consequence. I think that having to sit down and really reflect on how harmless committed and how that affected people allows them to see outside of themselves, allows them to view themselves as a part of the community, and helps to create more of a kind of connected atmosphere than ability. And ultimately, that's what we want kids to do, we want them to see outside of themselves that if they're doing good or bad, it's impacting the world around them. Teachers need to understand maybe that it's not about punishment for behavior, it's about students' learning, it's about students' learning, and none of us, adults or children, are perfect. We're all going to make mistakes, some bigger than others. It's what happens after that that really matters. And if we are charged with helping create the next generation of citizens, we need to find a way to help kids learn from their mistakes and understand they don't have to be perfect, but they need to be a part of the community and care about each other.
Listening to Dr. Maxwell and Rhett, you hear a lot of talk about circles and the role they play in restorative practices. This diagram represents the continuum of resources available through a restorative approach. You'll see that on one end, it's classroom-specific and provides strategies for individual teachers to deal with individual students. On the other end of the spectrum, however, is a restorative response which can be used on a broader scale when addressing larger issues in the school community or even among staff. As our teachers and administrators are engaged in development, this continuum is used to help them gain a better understanding of the process. Besides the work that Southwest Middle has done, other Parkway and Special School District administrators recently attended a development opportunity in restorative practices, and they've been sharing what they've learned with district administrators in the past few months. Dr. Jen Sebold will share with you what she learned and how this work transfers to our schools.
I think one of the misconceptions I had going into the conference at San Antonio was that restorative practices were solely aimed at repairing harms and already been committed. And I was wrong. What I learned is that the majority of this work is preventative and is aimed at building community and building relationships and strong unity within the school building so that you can prevent harm from occurring. But then those relationships are so strong that once something does happen to disrupt that harmony, that you already have something in place to, you know, handle that respectfully and with dignity for everybody involved. Using a restorative approach because the aim of it is to build community, I think that it can have a huge impact in the morale, the idea that people have, of the ways that people are respected and that we care about them, and that goes for staff and students alike.
Data is going to be one source to measure the effectiveness of a district-wide restorative approach. Existing discipline data, for instance, will be a good benchmark to assess how schools are using restorative practices to respond to student behavior. Although the data you see on the screen applies only to Parkway Elementary Schools, Parkway's middle and high school discipline data looks the same. This five-year trend represents incidence of out-of-school suspensions for all elementary students delineated by race. The blue column represents African-American students, the red column represents white students, and the green column represents all other ethnicities. The data shows that although the incidence of African-American students being suspended may not be more than other student groups, when you consider that African-American students make up almost 16% of the district's student population, this group of students does have higher rates of suspension compared to other groups. There are disproportionate number of African-American students being suspended in Parkway. As a district, we need to provide resources and support to our schools and staff to help address this. This is where we are now, and our hope is that we continue to develop our school and classroom leaders through restorative practices as yet another resource to reach all students. Remember, restorative practice is a piece of our comprehensive work around character education. Last year, Dr. Watson said that character education is rocket science. This work must be intentional. As we move forward or follow the Yellow Brick Road, because we all know that the Yellow Brick Road leads us to good things, Chelsea wrote that. We will continue to be intentional. We are continuing work with our school leaders, getting feedback on how we can develop school-specific opportunities for making a restorative response part of what we do. Summer development for teachers is also being developed as an opportunity for teachers to begin using restorative strategies in their classrooms. As this work picks up momentum, we want Parkway to lead the way and be a model for other districts in restorative practices.
Since we're telling all, Michael wouldn't say the rest of this. So, we certainly want you to have a takeaway and something to remember this road we are traveling in front of you. You have pieces of our yellow brick road, and if you click your heels, you never know what will happen. Michael? Thank you so very much. Thank you for your leadership and your collaborative work with Dr. Wall and our Parkway administrators. Also, thanks, I have to take time to thank the other individuals who lead the work around Goal Three. Erin, Charlotte, John, Alyssa, Amy, and Michael. Also, thanks to all of the individuals who shared with us on the video because we gained additional perspective about the work. Any questions?
Any questions, board?
I have a question.
Beth?
We heard from one teacher, how are other teachers reacting to this paradigm shift?
And you can pop up whenever you want. Not all teachers know about the work around restorative practices, and so it depends right now where that staff is and what that building leader is taking to that staff. For example, in one of our elementary schools, the counseling and administrative department just finished doing a book study together, and they identified one teacher who was willing to try some of the work in his classroom. And so that is how that particular school is going about getting started. Michael has been with one of our elementary schools and has already provided two development sessions, and will be going back later on in January for the third session, and so that entire staff is engaged in doing some of the work, and then coming back and Michael giving more information. And so we'll be looking at some data comparing this first semester compared to last semester to see how things may have changed and looked different with that entire staff. I think Michael has about five other schools on the docket, starting on January 4th with some development. Is there anything else you want to mention about the teachers?
Ms. Lally, the teacher that you saw, so Southwest Middle has been, I think, the most intentional with their development around restorative practices. So of all the schools in the district, I think that their teachers have had the most exposure and training. Maybe they had staff do out-of-district training on restorative practices. So that's why we went there sort of to talk to the students and talk to some of the teachers there. Jen Deacon-Buchek at Barrett's Elementary, she was one of the five administrators who went to San Antonio, so she's currently doing a salary credit course for teachers at Barrett's. And actually then, this Friday, I'm meeting with Amy Gurken-Cotes, Kelly Morton, and Jen to look at modeling that for summer development. Chelsea worked with Erin and myself to write a proposal for funding through an ME fellowship when we got that funding, so that will support that summer development work for those teachers who want to participate in learning more about restorative practices.
Do you have an end date in mind as to when you want all of the schools to be up and running?
The conference I attended in Pennsylvania, the common theme for a district our size is two to five years. Is that what it, that's what it takes to sort of get a good, strong foundation?
Do they bring in other trainers? I mean, I can't imagine. You're the only person that's going to train all these people.
In February, I'll be going to a three-day train the trainer through Character Plus. And those are conversations I've had with Dr. Watson and Dr. Marty about, you know, how does this work sort of replicate? And so those are things we have to talk about, sort of what's that plan look like to implement this?
I guess you'll identify other people who are interested, and then they can be trained to be trainers.
That's the thing, train people within the schools that the schools can do that development on their own.
I want to add, as Michael was talking about Barrett's, KSDK was at Barrett's this week and interviewed a teacher and took some, and interviewed some students that were engaged in a restorative circle, and December 22nd at 5:00 PM, KSDK is supposed to air that story.
Right.
Talking about the training, is there any effort to kind of help integrate this with professional development, or?
That's why, that's why Amy Gurken-Cotes is going to join us on Friday. She wants to, we want to talk in more detail about the salary credit course that Jen designed for the, I think, 20 teachers at Barrett's, and look at how we can replicate that, and then that would be part of that summer development as well.
Great.
I think this is excellent. It's really, really the way to go, obviously, but I guess getting there to the end result is kind of the critical thing. But how could a plan be developed for a school, for a principal to be trained, for one thing, and that principal then works with the staff and the students from that point on to develop the concept and how it works within their school? It seems to me that there needs to be some kind of a plan that a school could have, say, this is a template of a plan, like what's happened at Southwest. And then it's entirely up to the principal at that point to work the plan with the faculty and the students and parents to kind of create, you know, the environment that is accepting of this, because, you know, having been in schools before, teachers kind of expect when something goes wrong, particularly if a student is disrespectful, you know, something drastic should happen. And I don't think that's always the case. I think there are ways to help a student to realize that's inappropriate and have a teacher feel good about it at the same time. But, you know, I guess I'm saying that this is monumental. We're talking about school We're talking about school climate, we're talking about developing relationships, character development, and then the practice of what happens if a student does misbehave or is inappropriate. So, I don't know, I'm just kind of thinking, is there kind of a template, a plan that a school could have, that these are the characteristics that would really make this work, and how people could be trained within it?
I think one thing we're starting this year is really individualizing it for the school. So, a principal could have, could be on board and ready to do the work, and we did have an elementary principal who did a lot of, a large restorative response to student behavior last year without the foundational work with the teachers. The teachers didn't know what was going on.
Yeah.
So this year, she had Derek Wall come and do, at the start of the school year, had him come and do a couple-hour training on restorative practices, and she says it's really changed sort of the building climate, so they have a better understanding of what's going on. So, I think, to answer your question, I think it really has to be from the ground up, so we have to figure out where schools are, and schools are asking me, you know, how do we introduce it to the staff? What's the best way to do it? So I think the conversations I've been having with the schools, that's, that's sort of, that's the template, so to speak, of having the schools help us determine, you know, one elementary school is in a different place than another elementary school. So what's the best way for it to be introduced?
Well, you know, in a sense, teachers have employed restorative discipline in their classrooms all the time, because before, you know, a discipline issue gets from the classroom to the administrator, teachers have gone through a variety of different techniques and strategies to work with that student and help them to understand what they did wrong, and why it was wrong, and what they could do in the future to improve it. So, the concept has always been there. It's a matter of just formalizing more with, with specific tools that go beyond where the normal practice has been. That's how I see it, anyway, for teachers in the classroom.
I would also say, Sam, as we have nine Parkway Character Education commitments, and so schools are in different places in, within those nine commitments. And so a majority of our schools have already identified their values. We have some schools that haven't gotten there yet, but they are doing things within the range of commitments that we have. And so, we, we've never said you have to go one through nine, but you have to be working on, working through commitments one through nine.
Yeah.
And so, as Michael said, it depends on where that building leader has been taking that staff, and what their plan is, and where they want to go next, which will impact that starting place.
Yeah, and I think that's the way to go, too. You know, I don't think you could impose it on a school, saying, well, this is the way it should be, and everyone does it the same way, and individualizing, and I think is far more important, but within a structure, within the parameters of the, the character traits and expectations of what a good school climate is, and how you develop relationships, and cause kids to want to do the right thing.
Any other questions?
My comment would be, is I hope that you feel the interest and the focus of the board, because we really believe in this, and so much so, we've made it one of Dr. Marty's goals that we judge him on.
Which is now Dr. Watson's goal.
That's now become Michael's goal.
So we appreciate this kind of work and the kind of citizens and, and good people that this can generate, especially when they deal with problems.
I just have one more thing. I noticed in the report that we had received ahead of time about some of the climate surveys that are going to be upcoming, and will the school board be getting a report on the outcomes of those surveys that are going to be coming up?
We can certainly do that. The team, when I say team, the Character Education Action Team, Project Parkway, and others, as Erin and Alyssa worked tirelessly on this last year, we developed a new survey for our students, and it aligns with our commitments. So we used to have the climate survey. Now we have a survey that aligns with our commitments, and so we rolled it out last spring, and then many of our schools had the students take it this fall, and then kids will take it again in the spring. And so we will then start truly monitoring the data aligned with our commitments through this new survey. So absolutely, I can certainly share that with you, and I can add it to our agenda next week if you'd like.
And it looks like there's going to be a parent survey rolling out soon as well?
Yes, so they are working on that right now. Good work session last month with the team. This spring, we will be administering the survey to all of our parents and asking them to give us input on how we're doing as a district as aligned to our Character Education commitments. When the team finishes the parent survey, they will work on the staff survey. And all three surveys will be aligned, assessing the perspectives of those three groups based on the same topics as related to our commitments. So we can see how the parents feel, how the students feel, and how staff feel in relationship to feeling safe, for example.
And how will that parent survey get pushed out to the parents?
We were just having that conversation, and so we were just engaging that conversation on Tues- Tuesday, and so we will be talking with Mr. Tandy about some of the ideas that we have. I mean, I could share the ideas, but there's still, we have to form them. We have a couple of thoughts about that.
Okay.
Because we certainly want, if a parent has kids in three different schools, to have the opportunity, and we would like that feedback from them based on the individual schools where their kids are, so.
Okay.
I think it was last fall, wasn't it, Michael, when we had that dean from one of the law schools in Michigan, was here to do a, and, and then so I, Sam, you're absolutely right, this is a big task, but, I mean, this is a, you know, again, schools are taking this on, but society as a whole still looks pretty, you know, looks pretty punitive. She was talking about a design of a, you know, trying to teach a different approach in law school about, it's not about just, you know, punitive, it's about, and she had some wonderful examples. She had spent some time in Brooklyn and saw where people were trying to change the mindset of how you deal with, you know, some pretty tough people from the criminal system. But, I mean, I think the key in this, I think, is just going to be some patience and finding those, those pockets out there of people that want to, to want to jump aboard. But when Michael, and Chelsea and I have been talking to Michael, we, you got to have somebody leading this, and we're really, we're really pleased Michael has gotten passionate about this, and is, and is excited, and I know he's even doing some work with, with Character Plus and Derek Wall you mentioned, and I think it's going to take a lot of resources in regional, in a regional sense, too.
Character Plus is, there's a whole restorative initiative, so they have representatives from all the districts, and we're meeting monthly to develop a, a community-wide support group for all the districts to be on the same page. So, it's really great to hear where other districts are and the work that everyone's doing.
Well, this is just as important as anything we've ever taught kids, because it's something they're going to deal with all their lives, and so if they can learn how to deal and work through things, even prevent, then maybe we'll have a little bit less road rage and all the other things that go on that are reactive rather than working through a problem. So thank you very much. We look forward to, to the work, and thank you again. We have saved the last and most dynamic part of the meeting for Patty Bedborough. Everybody's looking forward to budget assumption. I love numbers, especially as they deal with sports.
I do not have a latest sports score, sorry. Thank you all for inviting me to come and talk about budget tonight. So dynamic, okay, so I'll have to see if I can achieve that goal. So I want to begin by finding the remote. So, our budget timeline for this year, of course, this evening, we're doing our preliminary assumptions, presenting them to you along with, just a recap of the revised budget that you approved earlier in the agenda tonight. At the January board meeting, we will actually present these assumptions for your approval. During the months of January, February, March, we'll actually be, the buildings and the departments will actually be inputting their budgets, designing their budgets. In February, March, not only will I review it along with Brian, but then we'll bring it to SAT for, for review. Then after that, we'll do some finance, the finance department will do the processing. We will get then a budget presentation ready for you for the April board meeting. Also, that by June 8th, we'll have a budget book ready for you to review, and then hopefully to adopt for next year. So just in brief summary of the revised budget, where we finished last year in total revenue, so that includes debt service and capital projects, $320,535,026. With the revised budget, we have a decrease to $255,184,336. The largest component of that decrease is because last year, we had not only the bond issuance for the 2014 bond issue, the 50,000, or 50 million, the first issuance of the bond issue, we also had a refunding in there. So, most of that decrease is at 77 million there. One of the lines that increased the most is our local property tax. Most of that is attributable to our recoupment. The other portion is from our 15 cent increase for our debt service levy. So remember, these are total budget. So when we look at expenditures, once again, one of the largest impacts when we're looking at total, comparing it to last year's budget, is the change in debt service. So when we did the refunding bond issuance last year, it paid off that older bond issuance. So we have that variance of the 29 million in there. So we do have salary increases, benefit increases. You'll notice that large jump in purchase services. Keep in mind that that is where Kelly Services is actually housed. So, our salary increase is only .63 percent. Well, in our 2015 fiscal year amounts, the actual substitute cost was in the salary amount. So this year, in fiscal year 16, the, the cost of subs is in purchase services. So normally, we have a salary growth of about 1% or so, so essentially that moved down to the purchase services, and because that's a lower amount to start with, it appears percentage-wise to be a larger impact. Now just moving to the operating budget, once again, you see the, the same change in our revenue. The largest impact is from our property tax, so it means we're dealing with operating funds. This is the portion attributable not only to our increase in assessed valuation, but in our recoupment rate. Most of the other revenues essentially stayed the same. Revised budget expenditures, so this is where just our operating expenditures, we believe our, our changes in salaries, benefits, purchase services, once again, that's where the sub-costs come in. Our supply budget of 16.69% increase, part of that flows with our textbook adoption that's budgeted in this year for our math. And then we hope to end the year with total expenditures of $226,957,672, give or take a dollar there. But one item that you'll be very happy to see is our projected ending fund balance. So last year, we ended the fiscal year with a 16% fund balance. This year, we're projecting an 18.29% balance. So, for the first time in several years, we will actually be over the, the board's set goal of the 17.3%. And much of that will be directly from an impact of the recoupment and maintaining our expenses at just a very slight growth each year. Just as a conceptual total of where all of our revenues come from, so these are operating revenues, so not debt service and not capital projects. Our local, which includes not only our property tax, but it also includes Prop C, which is the statewide sales tax, our tuition from the voluntary transfer program, our student activities, et cetera, so that makes up 89.8% of our total budget. Our county revenues make up only 1.5%. Most of that is from a stock tax that we actually collect, and that is, you know, benefiting us to have Scott Trade in our district. State, 5%, so that includes not only our formula revenues, but also our transportation revenues from the state. Federal, 2.5%, so that's items like our Title I, Title II, our food service program, and a small portion with Medicaid. And then other, a 1.2%, that's mostly made up of transportation from other districts that are funded back to us, so our share in homeless transportation, or transportation of families in transition, and then also the tuition from other districts, Riverview Gardens and Normandy. So our expenditure breakout, salaries make up 61.6%. Last year, when you saw this number, it would have been bigger, because remember, substitutes used to be in this number, but now substitutes are in purchase services. Benefits make up 22%. So that's not only our health, medic, our health dental vision, life insurance that we pay, but it's also a big portion of that is the retirement that we pay. So employees have the 14.5% or the 6.86% withheld from their check, but the district actually matches that, too. So that's a big portion. And also, employment taxes such as Medicare and Social Security are included in that number also. So purchase services, 6% of our total budget. Supplies, 8.9%. Student activities, 1.5%. And then principal and interest is negligible, and that actually is paying for two things, a small portion of debt on laptop lease program that we entered into several years ago, and then the other portion is just the remaining amount of our copier lease. Projections for 2016, so we should have a drum roll, right, to make that dynamic? So, you know, what are some of the factors that we take into effect when we're looking at the budget? So, of course, recoupment and assessment appeals. So, right now, as we're looking into next year, we're not predicting recoupment, but we'll continue to do those calculations, so we may have recoupment by the time we set that tax rate. Assessment appeals, we do have a rather constant monitoring of the reports. We're working with St. Louis County in order to get more of a monthly report and not an annual report on the assessment appeals, so that we can predict how much it'll impact our, our funding. New construction, always something that we look at. Now, one of the things that the assessor has done for our district is the nursing home that is right on the border of Parkway and Valley Park, that actually is in our district. So, not this year, but in next fiscal year, we'll actually have the benefit of the assessed valuation on that, on that property. It should be around $300,000 for us. Enrollment projections, you'll see our enrollment projections later on in the presentation. Of course, salary and benefits are one of our, our biggest expense, so of course, that's crucial to part of our, our projections. Our building budgets, we predict that that's essentially going to stay the same per pupil allocation. And operational costs, we'll review transportation facilities, energy and technology. You know, we take into effect inflation and interest rates. So right now, especially because of the nationwide fuel costs, inflation is running probably right around 1% or less. So we know we won't have a lot of growth in our assessed valuation because of that, that'll be limited to that. But we also need to keep watch on the interest rates. So, not only the potential interest rate that we may earn on our funds, but the one that may be even more crucial to our budget is that interest rate that we may pay on our borrowing. So, it's going to have two impacts. First, we know with the recoupment in the building of our fund balance, we potentially will have less that we need to borrow for our TANs next year, so hopefully that'll safeguard us from some of the interest rate costs. But we also want to be watchful of when our next issuance of the remaining funds for the 2014 bond issuance are. So we have $44 million remaining to borrow, and so we'll touch on that a little bit later. And of course, we're always watchful of what happens in the legislature, so not only at the Missouri level, but at the federal level, too, because that can impact our budget. So just to look at our assessed valuation history, not only is our actual assessed valuation, but our- but our settled claims assessed valuation is highlighted on this slide. This last year, we did have more significant growth in our assessed valuation than we have in past years. For next year, we're looking at just about a two percent growth in that assessed valuation also. So, local tax revenue, just the property tax makes up seventy-one point nine percent of our operating revenue. As you recall from previous slide, there's other things that are included in local, but our biggest component is our property tax. And over the last few years, we had paid back over eight million dollars in protest settlements, or hoping that trend slows down, because certainly last year it did. And this, of course, highly impacted our ability to build our fund balances. This year, the recoupment will help to help exceed our fund balance. And of course, we always have our voluntary rollback, but at this time, we're not suggesting that we use any portion of that. So our historical collection rate, so that is the rate at which we collect the funds from our property tax versus what we have been assessed or the, had the ability to collect. In fiscal year 2015, we actually had a collection rate of ninety-seven percent. We're predicting a ninety-six point seven-five, not only for this upcoming, for this current year, sorry, that we're in, but also in the upcoming year. So as we move closer to the budgeting time, we may adjust that slightly based on what our actual collection rate is this year. So now, moving into our five-year forecast and our operating revenues, we'll start with. Local property tax, we're looking at approximately one point five percent increase after fiscal year sixteen. So remember, we'll actually have a decrease in next year due to the one-time, or we'll have a decrease in the following year, so sixteen, seventeen, based on the recoupment that we're collecting this year. Prop C, we're looking at an annual growth of about two point eight percent, so that's our historical growth over the last couple of years. Federal revenue, we have an annual increase budgeted in of about two percent, but remember, everything with federal revenue, we have a matching expenditure to. So it's not just money that can go to the fund balance. Other local earnings on investments, we have an increase of a three percent per year. So remember, also, majority of what we collect on earnings on investments is not necessarily from our cash balances, but actually from the interest earned on our delinquent property taxes collected by the county. Remaining revenues, we essentially froze at their current budgeted rate. Overall, you'll see from the chart that we essentially have a one point six-five percent increase annually after next year. And our planned slight increase in fiscal year sixteen is due to the one-time recoupment. As Michael Suppy had presented earlier this evening to Community Ed, our potential growth with the nine additional classrooms will be beneficial to the school district. So we know that we will have probably one year where the increase in revenues may be offset by our startup costs, because last year, we did have an impact from the startup costs. But, we know then in future years, after those startup costs are consumed, then we should have growth in our overall financial statements from that. So looking at the chart here, you will see with our revised budget, overall, we have an operating revenue increase of four point oh seven percent versus last year. So of course, the major component of that is our recoupment. Next year, you actually see that decrease. So, you know, removing the recoupment revenues, but adding in the increase just from operations and assessed valuation growth. And then consistently, in the future years, a one point six-six, one point six-seven, one point six-seven percent increase. Of course, the further you go out, the more inaccurate the numbers are. They're just a conservative view of our revenues. And we know that the economy still is growing, but it is growing at a rather small, you know, slow pace. Our five-year operating expense forecast, so our basis of our numbers that we put together, annual salary increase, overall of a one point two percent. We're predicting right now, a slightly less turnover savings, mostly because the incentive ended, but we, we believe that we still will have retirement turnover, et cetera, but maybe not at the large numbers we've experienced in the last few years. Plus, we'll have anticipated new hires based on enrollment projections that are added in there. And at annual benefit increase, overall, about a two point six percent increase year over year. It seems a five percent health insurance and dental increase, less any turnover savings, of course, and essentially a flat retirement percentage increase. Purchase services, an increase of one point four percent annually, supplies, two percent annually, and currently, no increase in debt service or student activities. So when we look at that forecast this year, so if we look at the column fifteen, sixteen, we had a three point one-eight percent increase in expenditures overall from our, from our last year actual, sorry. And we're looking further out in our projections, next year, we'll have a one point one percent increase in expenditures. And in the following years, a one point six-five percent, one point five-nine, one point five-six. So, those percentage increases are almost mere what that revenue growth is too. So then, when we put those together and look at our fund balance, we have projected that we will meet the target of the new policy of a point two-five percent fund balance growth in 2016, 2017, and 2017, 2018. However, the further we go out, we're having a little bit of difficulty meeting those targets. One of our, our challenges is that in 2017, 2018, we will need to purchase additional buses. So when we purchased buses a few years ago, we essentially purchased three years' worth of buses. In these last three years, we haven't purchased any, so we've had essentially one point one million dollars or so that we haven't spent in the budget, nor have we budgeted. But now, we're going to have to budget that amount. In the same timeframe, we have a capital fund balance that is beginning to dwindle. So, in the future years, you will see that we'll have a transfer then from the general and teachers fund into the capital projects fund in order to fund for the bus purchases. In the 2016, 2017 year specifically, you'll see that nine hundred thousand transfer into capital projects. Part of that is our planned transfer from the savings in our fuel costs that we're realizing this year, that we're putting into capital projects to help build kind of a balance in there to help offset the costs for the, the buses in the future years. Enrollment projections, so these are the numbers as of October, so they are not updated with Nathan's newest numbers from earlier this week, but I believe they were essentially the same. Keep in mind, these enrollment projections do not include the new potential subdivision in the Riverbend area. We have heard that the subdivision has been approved, but we do not know a start date as yet. So we have not added any of those into these numbers yet. But as you can tell, we still have a steady growth in our enrollment from our, our residential kids. So ju- just to look at that graphically, so, as you know, enrollment growth leads to growth in staffing too. So if we look at keeping our same ratios, et cetera, we apply our standard ratio to that. Initially, we're looking at possibly an increase of ten FTE for next year. So we'll know more as we get closer to the year. And of course, it always is impacted by where the kiddos are enrolling. So, in which school, in which grade level, where those fluctuations could happen. And remember too, that the enrollment projections is not an exact science. So, it all does depend on new homes being purchased, you know, and existing homes, you know, possibly turning over and such too. Recap, salaries for this last year, in generals, there was an overall salary increase of two point six-nine percent. Currently, we're in negotiations with the teachers this year, and in the spring, we begin negotiations with the nurses. Last year, we completed a three-year contract with CWA, and in that, for the sixteen, seventeen school year, there was an overall two point eight percent increase in wages. So that is our only known factor at this time for salary adjustments. Fringe benefits, overall, our health and dental insurance premiums have risen about eight point one percent. So our self-insured program projects a five hundred thousand to a million-dollar operating surplus for 2015, and that's an expected fund balance growth. We need that growth in that, that fund. Budgeted increase, we, we actually budgeted an increase of five percent for fifteen, sixteen. So, the employees are essentially picking up the additional three point one percent of the increase for 2016. So we have a combination of some planned design changes along with increases in their out-of-pocket. With the current market conditions, we assume essentially the same increase in costs for 2017. So, healthcare in general has increased about eight to ten percent annually over the last few years. State retirement system has announced that their contribution rates will remain unchanged for next year. So school building budgets, we're recommending that the current allocation per student remains the same, so the one forty-two per student for elementary, one fifty-three per student for middle, and the two oh five for high school. And keep in mind that the buildings are allowed to carry over up to fifty percent of their current year allocation, as long as they, they attach it to a plan on how they're going to spend it. And remember that carryover or the rollover of funds, as we also refer to it, it does impact our revised budget amounts, because when we do our preliminary budgets, we look at their enrollment amount times the per pupil allocation, and so that's the expense that goes in. But when we do the revised budget, we not only have the per pupil, we also increase that by the rollover funds. So sometimes, that has a negative impact on the ending fund balance amount. Transportation, we actually have a fleet of one hundred and forty-nine buses currently. As mentioned previously, we have approximately a ten-year replacement cycle, and it requires twelve new buses a year. So at the end of 2014 fiscal year, we did purchase thirty new CNG-powered buses. Our average fleet age currently is four point two years, and our next bus purchase, the bid selection, et cetera, will happen during the sixteen, seventeen school year, but the actual delivery and payment of the new buses will happen in the seventeen, eighteen school years. So currently, we know we have ten buses that meet the Clean Air Grant funding criteria, so we could use those to fund CNG buses. But this grant is not as lucrative as the grant that we had in fiscal year 2014. This one essentially pays for our used diesel buses, so we have ten that qualify and meet the standards, and they actually destroy those buses, so taking them completely off the road. And they give us essentially a credit to bring that cost of the CNG bus down to a cost of a diesel bus. So it, it's not covering fifty percent of the cost or, or so like the previous granted, it's more adjusting it to the market cost of a diesel. So just kind of to go over some of our spectacular fuel savings, and I know it's impacted all of our household incomes too, you know, in our budgets, without having to pay close to three dollars a gallon for regular fuel, imagine what that does then when we have a fleet of one hundred and forty-nine buses, plus our white fleet. So, our savings, as I've noted before in a board letter, and I believe we had discussions at Tuesday morning meeting too, that it, we plan to take the savings from the fuel for this year and place that into the capital projects fund, just simply to have a bit of a savings built up. So currently, we budget about three dollars per gallon, and if you look at the historical cost of fuel over the last few years, certainly, the three dollars per gallon was probably a low amount, so we did decrease it from what we were budgeting at that time. But our latest fueling, we only paid one, one point four four nine nine per gallon, so a fifty percent savings. Now remember, the beginning of the year, we did not have a fifty percent savings, but we did have probably a twenty-five to thirty percent savings. So currently, we are looking at that fifty percent savings. And when we look at that savings, we wanted to break it down not only in total fuel costs, but in fuel usage. So, on this slide here, it shows truly the impact of what adding CNG to our fleet has done to our purchase of diesel. So, we purchased the buses the end of the 2013, 2014 fiscal year. So even in that year, we essentially purchased ten thousand less gallons of diesel fuel. But truly, in the whole year of 2014, 2015, which is our first full year of CNG usage, we went from the last previous full year usage of the two fifty-seven, five twenty-four gallons to two hundred and thirteen thousand, five seventeen in diesel fuel. So, we had a savings of forty-four thousand gallons purchased in diesel just from going to the compressed natural gas buses. And of course, it's cleaner air, cleaner, quieter buses, et cetera too. But what does that total in actual fuel savings? So, in that same year, 2013, 2014, we spent eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for fuel. This year, if we annualize out what we've spent so far, we're looking at spending about three hundred and ninety-three thousand. So certainly, a four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar savings versus what we spent two years ago. Facilities and our 2014 bond issues, so of course, we have started some of the wonderful projects with our, our bond issue. We do have a remaining portion of the forty-four million to be sold. Currently, we're estimating that we may need to start looking at the sale of the remaining portion of that bond issuance in the fall of 2016. Originally, we had that in the spring of 2017, but we believe we need to move it forward. It may actually be better for us interest-wise too, because we want to get in to the market prior to some of the interest rates starting to escalate. And we have budgeted the spending based on our project costs and timeline. So, that's also going to be updated as the projects for this summer start coming in. So, as soon as next board meeting, we will have some projects for your approval, because they're out to bid, and I believe they will be also proposed at the February and the March board meeting too. Technology equipment, so currently, we're working on the elementary refresh for 2015, 2016. This year, we also had the challenge of having the high school business and marketing refresh. And remember, we get vocational grant money from the state as a portion of the funding for those refreshes. We also had high school teacher refresh. Looking just specifically at technology and, and the funding that the bond issue has helped them with, of course, we have the completion of the wired network upgrade, so that was completed the end of the summer. This evening, you just approved the server and the storage upgrade, so those will be installed. And then upcoming this summer and into the fall, we have the overall wireless upgrade. So, E-rate funding will help offset some of the cost of the refresh. This year, because we obtained E-rate from the completion of the wired network upgrade, we actually had about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars we received in E-rate. So that certainly has increased the amount that we were able to provide for the elementary refresh. But on average, you know, the E-rate could be very volatile, and it's based on, on our usage, but it's run as low as eighty thousand, and of course, this year, it was seven hundred and fifty thousand. But each year, they almost give a kind of threat, if you will, would they, would you say that, a little bit of a threat, that this may be the last year for E-rate funding? So, we never truly bank on it or budget it. So, we always look, you know, in the November, December months to see what we receive and then start to build the budget for how we will spend that. So, overall, energy costs are electric and natural gas, you know, that we have put in... So overall, energy costs are electric and natural gas, you know, that we have put in several sustainability projects in order to lower our costs. So overall, usage was five percent lower for fiscal year fifteen compared to fiscal year fourteen, and save true savings are being realized. The new LED lighting, so on the the parking lots, the project installation is almost a hundred percent complete. Now they're working on the dimming controls, so that when there is no activity on the parking lot and it's dark, the lights will go down dimmer. And then when there is activity on the parking lot, the lights will come back up, and then after non-use, they will dim back down. In the chart that's on here, this is actually converted energy in its actual usage per year. So you'll see, and this is in calendar year, so this is not in fiscal year. So even if we look at the spike in 2014, remember, in 2014, we had all that snow and a lot of cold weather, so that could have been part of that. And then remember, that summer was actually very, very warm, too. So we had higher usage there, whereas in 2015, we had drop-off. Plus, we had part of the LED lighting was installed in 2015 in part of those numbers, and a much milder summer this past year. Next up, Kelly Sports Marketing. So as you all know, the scoreboard at North High is completely up and running, but we are nearly complete with our two additional scoreboards, so at West High and Central High, those should be completed by mid-January. So far, we'd we have secured via contract, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars in funding. We're working on additional title partners, so one is LHM. LHM is actually a hotel management company. They own Marriott, so at the Westport, et cetera, and Union Station. So today, they actually met, and I believe we will have an agreement to present to you next month with LHM. LHM is also a partner at Westport Plaza, so they were part of the entire deal with Worldwide Technologies and the TIF project there. So that's actually how we got to know them as a potential contact. So we're also looking at partners in grocery, banking, builders and/or construction, and possibly phone and cable. So what are our challenges? So we know that we have some new addition new initiatives, and we also have some constraints with existing budgets. As we've already talked about, is our our bus replacement schedule and our Capital Projects Fund. So we need to somehow add in about one point one to one point two million dollars into a budget that we know that our revenues are growing at one point six percent, and our expenditures are already growing at about one point five percent. And we need to increase fund balance percentage. Replacement schedule for our current evaluation system, so we call it PIERs. So we're looking for a replacement system. We need funding for a curriculum solution. Our curriculum solution currently, much like the evaluation system, is just very outdated and very difficult to to update. Computer refresh costs, we know that computers, the number of devices we have and the cost of devices are difficult to keep up with that refresh schedule. So and especially if our E-rate actually does go away, then we're going to have to find additional operating funds in order to fund that refresh. And of course, we always want to look at our salary scales and build our salary scales so that we can compete with our targeted market competitors. But of course, no presentation would be complete without a graphical presentation of our fund balance, not only our history, but where we want to go. So certainly, the board goal was seventeen point three percent. This next year, we will meet that goal and will exceed the eighteen percent. The next two years on here, we definitely have shown that with conservative budgeting, we'd be able to meet the quarter percent growth, but we know in the following years after that, we would be decreased. So this is a repeat of a previous slide, but just to bring back to your attention some of our our focus, remember, our revenues are growing, but the economy has not, if you recall, the assessed valuation is not nearly what it was back in 2008. So it's gradually growing and getting there. But with that, we have slow revenue growth, so we need to make sure that our expenditures actually grow at that same pace or lower in order to meet our fund balance projections and commitments. So of course, we're always focused on improving the fund balance, so continual calculation of our recruitment and levy that recruitment when available. We want to use that voluntary rollback only when absolutely needed. We're going to continue to review our facility and staffing utilization. We do have that potential subdivision in Riverbend. So like I said previously, it was approved through the city of Maryland Heights, but it was in a scaled-down version from what the original version was. So the current plot would be one hundred and forty-eight homes, one hundred cottage-type homes, one hundred and forty-two attached villas, seventy-five row houses, so I'm not quite sure the definition between the three of those that separate them, and three hundred and twenty units in apartments. So truly, if that is completely built out, we will have to really look at our schools and our our, you know, our attendance lines, et cetera. So of course, like any year, as the year progresses, we're going to have a better idea of that continued impact of our protested tax settlements, too. And as you know, I'll keep you posted on that. But we do have an intentional commitment to grow the fund balance, and hopefully, you you felt that with going through this presentation. So any questions?
The new development at Shetler, like, and also in the crossings area, the new homes that were developed there.
So certainly, we can see that with our population explosion at Henry. I don't have the specific numbers with me this evening, but I could follow up with a board letter on that. I know in your CAFR, one of the pages in there shows the building capacity versus the enrollment, and you'll notice at Henry, there is an overcapacity there. So we have staff some of the rooms with a TA in order to help with the overcrowding. We also know that the project, in order to add the classrooms at Henry, they're in the final design phases. That'll go out to bid hopefully by early January. And then we had some brief discussions today that possibly that construction could start before summer because it it necessarily wouldn't interrupt the classes.
Do you know the projected enrollments out of that area at this point?
No, but I I don't have them right off the top of my head, but I can put that in a board letter for you.
With your convenience, don't.
I can do that.
You were talking about funding, you know, like the computer refresh.
Mm-hmm.
It seems like the Bring Your Own Device would help a lot.
It does, but as you can imagine, we have varying household incomes, too. So varying, I guess, household availability to Bring Your Own Device. We do have a program that has been implemented at Northeast Middle, where they can actually loan the computers and the essentially the air card, but I know it's called something else. And we have had good luck with the checkout of those devices, too.
The Chromebooks.
The Chromebooks.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, and I know in some of the classrooms or grades, we allow them to bring their own device, and I think on any given day, we might have up to five thousand devices connected.
Absolutely, sir.
So we have been doing Bring Your Own Device for a while, and we do, we are seeing an increase in adoption, and that's why we're making some of the infrastructure changes that we're making. What we haven't seen yet is that offset where Bring Your Own Device has become so ingrained that we're able to reduce the cost, reduce the number of devices we are supporting in the classroom. So Bring Your Own Device was enabling students to search when they want, when they with how they want, and really kind of carry the classroom with them around the building and at home. But we haven't gotten to that point yet where I can say we can scale back our refresh purchases because of the offset of Bring Your Own Device. Now, the adoption of Google, which we're just kind of heading into our second year of, it's flown by, is is helping mature that Bring Your Own Device program that we have because it's provided kind of a unified platform across all devices. And as we continue to see that saturation, I think we will get to that point, Chris, but we're not there yet. I was actually having a conversation with counterpart Lindberg, who's been doing BYOD a few, three or four years longer than we have, and even there, not quite to that point where they're really seeing the BYOD offset the the classroom needs or the the district's needs to provide devices.
I appreciate that. It just seems like that'd be an area that where you could save some money, because I'd rather spend the money on infrastructure.
Some of the PTOs have funded.
Oh, absolutely.
Some of their Chromebooks also. And so how does that, is that helpful to the district when that happens or when you go through this?
Of course, it always is. We appreciate our PTOs helping out all the time. The the contribution the PTOs have made have been, we're grateful for. And it has caused us to take a look at where we can make some adjustments. But that being said, equity at BYOD and PTOs have created an equity issue that we've got to make sure that we're we're addressing. So we can't, at some PTOs have funded a lot of Chromebooks. Other PTOs have put money towards furniture and other areas and not towards devices. So and that's one of the things we're spending, I'm over there hammering away on keys, because we are trying to find what is that magic, that new magic model for specifically our elementary classrooms? And what will allow us to complement what the PTOs have already provided, but make sure that we have all the classrooms where they need to be and still allow some students to be able to take advantage of their BYOD and some of those things, which we are doing in elementary as well. So we're getting there, we're getting there, but as Patty has already said, it's changing so quickly that we're trying, we're trying to be more agile with with the plans that we're implementing, so.
I have a question on energy. You showed there natural gas and diesel and some of those savings, but I didn't say anything about the solar, the.
So some of the solar savings is in that per-unit graph, but if you want specifics on that, I can have Eric do some more workup on that.
No, I just make wanted to make sure that it was included. If it's included.
It's certainly included in our energy usage, and especially in the graph that that combines both that natural gas and the electricity costs. And they're on the the energy page, so part of the savings coming from where we were back in 2011 to where we are now. A big portion of that, of course, is the solar panels. And this is based on not dollar savings, but usage. It's really hard to actually encapsule the dollar savings currently, just because there were, I just don't want to even say this, in the past, there weren't necessarily twelve months paid in each fiscal year. So some fiscal years had thirteen months and some eleven. So we're just really have a concerted effort going forward to make sure that we have twelve months of data in each fiscal year, too, to make that a better indication. So that's why we didn't go to that actual slide. Now, remember, too, that we also have energy cost increases from Ameren and from LeCleod and from our consortium that we buy natural gas from. So some of that offsets some of the savings and actually per therm, essentially, our per kilowatt that we actually pay for. So but the nice thing that we know is our energy budget has not increased over the last several years, simply because of the sustainability efforts that the district has been committed to and installed.
Also, I think the, I just want to compliment you guys, too, the, and Eric, the installation of the lights down at South, they're on the football field. I mean, it's just innovative because it's very bright where it needs to be, and all of a sudden, it just dies, and so it doesn't bleed into the neighborhoods, you know, their homes and yards. And it's cheaper, too, so.
Very good.
Any other questions for?
Maybe they should look at that for Westminster.
Yeah. Any other questions for for Patty and her team?
So do we have a prediction with the new subdivision in Maryland Heights of students?
Yeah, we were just battering it around.
So I believe Nathan has said in the past, it's been a like a sixty percent rule of thumb. So if we add all, so that's with homes. Not knowing really what the definition between a college, a cottage, attached villa, and a row house is, I'm not sure if that's sounds more like young adults moving there without kids or older adults after the children move out, and we should only look at the one hundred and forty-eight homes plus the three hundred and twenty apartments?
We just had a brief conversation about this today. Can you confirm, but it was point two five per household is what he would estimate without knowing all that information that you were trying to.
Point two five students per household?
Right. So he said, you know.
How many households?
So that that would only be like three hundred students if that were.
Yeah, so the impact may be less than we would initially think. That's where he would he would use growing for. And then it would be a progressive build, I mean, it wouldn't, obviously, all those units wouldn't go up in one year, so they'd be over a matter of time.
Maybe different ages, middle, high, or elementary.
Right, distributed K-12.
Right. And even in the information we received from the city of Maryland Heights, they said it was one hundred and twenty units limited per year in installation, so.
It's going to be about a year until they start.
He said there is absolutely no activity at the site yet, so that was a confirmation from him today, so.
You're like Sam, we were a little bit interested in, you know, the, you got the thing there at Clayton and Shetler, you've got the one by Target there, and then there's some down there past Manchester.
There's the two up the road that are going on right now.
Yes, there are some.
Been vacant for years, and all of a sudden, there's.
All of a sudden. Well, in in what we experienced in the Hannah Woods attendance area this year, there was a lot of sales of homes, and a lot of new students showed up for class. So we did have a little bit of an explosion there. That was unpredicted and unintended, so we do have those. So just when we were looking at the enrollment in total, we grew by ten, but I, you know, for next year, but I know this year, we grew by a few more than budgeted simply because of some of those pockets.
Patty, one thing you could, maybe you know the answer to this. We've heard from you that the county is about a year and a half behind on the on the new construction, but it seems to me if somebody moves into the house, they're stuck, they start paying property tax in their note right away, and I don't understand why we wouldn't benefit from that.
They do, so they did a concerted effort to actually get more current on that, but as a new house closes, it's probably closer to being a true assessment and payment, but it's sometimes that building refurbishment, et cetera, that has more of that delay from what I've seen. So we have not taken the time to assess property by property, but that probably is one of those things that we may have to take the time to dig into further.
I think there's thirty-seven homes going in where Clayton and Shetler is, there's sixty-something in that one right by Target off of Clayton.
Yeah, so we may have to build another addition onto Henry.
Well, I think what it was, it may have been in one of the other reports that showed the capacity versus enrollment at West Middle School. Right now, it looks like enrollment is exceeding capacity there. Does that seem accurate, or there was a mention that maybe the capacity numbers needed to be updated also?
So I had that conversation with Mike Martins and Scott Bennett today, and they said they have not had a concern at all that has been brought to them on West Middle. Have you? So I think the capacity numbers listed on that report are very dated.
Okay.
So I asked them to kind of count the classrooms, and we'll reevaluate that for next year's report.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
In 2000, we had twelve hundred students.
Or more. And it seemed adequate at the time.
I'm sure your class sizes are a little bit bigger.
The class sizes were a little bit bigger, yes.
West is our biggest middle school now.
Is it really?
Yeah, it's over a thousand.
And you may not have some of the special education programs, special.
No, we didn't have, no, we didn't have those programs.
Any other questions for Patty right now?
Thank you.
Super assumption. Super assumptions, pretty clear to us, I think, and we hope we're able to. We did notice in one of the graphs there when Don Senti ascended to the throne.
So did the assessed valuation.
Yes, but.
Okay, we'll give him that.
We give him credit for having helped us do a lot of good things, including all-day kindergarten.
Very good.
All right.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Patty, thank you so much. Congratulations again to you and your staff on the audit.
Yes.
We appreciate that. Okay, there is no special meeting. The next anticipated closed session will be held on Wednesday, January 13th. Wow, already into 2016.
Can you believe that?
At 6:00 PM here at Central Middle School. Details of the closed session will be posted within 24 hours of the anticipated meeting. May I have a motion in a second to adjourn the regular meeting? So move. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Yes.
We are.